PCT, are we good? Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the September 11th, 2023 regular open session of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowles?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Present.
Mayor Protem Vaterlos?
Here.
Mayor Big Stick?
Present. City Clerk, are there any meeting notes you'd like to read?
Tonight's meeting is being held in person and also held via Zoom. As an alternative format for viewing and participating in the meeting, the Zoom link and the dial-in number are provided in the meeting agenda. The meeting is also being broadcast on local Comcast Channel 26 and via livestream at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For those participating via Zoom, raise your hand to indicate that you wish to speak on an item. Is public comment is open for that item? Press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute once called upon by the management analyst, Brooks.
And a friendly reminder to those of us here in the audience, if you haven't placed a parking permit on your car's dash yet, please do so. You'll find them at the bottom of the stairs on the door. And just stick one of those on your car so you don't get ticketed. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramehtushaloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramehtushaloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramehtushaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramehtushaloni peoples. Councilmember Beer, would you please lead us in a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a special presentation tonight about the Fog Fest. Paige Miller, perhaps? Please join us and tell us about the Fog Fest and why we should all be excited.
Hi, thank you, Pacifica Council. My name is Paige Miller. I am the Vice President of Fog Fest this year. I'm also the owner of the Magic Toy Box here in town. Wanted to announce this year, we are bringing back the 36th Annual Pacific Coast Fog Fest. That will be taking place Saturday, September 23rd and Sunday, September 24th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. each day. As usual, we will be kicking off Saturday with a parade at 9:00 a.m. They'll be going down Beach Boulevard. Wanted to introduce, I think I've handed out to each of you the poster for this year's Fog Fest. This is designed by local artist Mike Boyle. He's a well-known local tattoo artist and commercial designer. He's done work for NorCal Surf Shop, Cookies Brand, and he's also a bicycle artist. Also, you guys have before you a poster. By popular demand, people have requested that we bring back the Fandango dance. This is a dance we've done every, or that used to be done the week prior to Fog Fest at the Moose Lodge. This year, we are rebranding it as the Cutters Ball. As the Fog, Fandango is a little bit of a dated term. A lot of people don't know what a Fandango is. So, and we wanted to kind of bring it more in line with the events of Fog Fest and serving of the annual Fog Cutters cocktail that we do for Fog Fest every year. Last year was our first Fog Fest post-COVID lockdown. We missed two years prior to that. Wanted to report a little bit about that. We had record attendance of over 70,000 attendees to the Fog Fest. It went very well. We raised over $92,000 for local charities. This year, we're expecting to exceed that. Part of that is we've already exceeded our prior year's commitments from local sponsorships. And so, as long as attendance is up this year, we should be exceeding that by quite a bit. Also, I wanted to talk about, we sort of have a new Board of Directors. A lot of the older board members have retired and moved on. So, I kind of wanted to introduce and talk about them. The President this year is James Crowe. He assumed presidency last year. He is the owner of Coastside Media and has his office here in town. Vice President is Pay, 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 some guy named Paige. I don't know who that guy is. Oh, that's me. Our Director of Logistics and Inventory is some guy named John Beckmeyer. A few of you guys might know who that is as well.
Are these all people who moved in last week?
Yeah. Well, John's been through a couple of Fog Fests already, but he's more taking on a more senior position as Executive Director this year. And John's been really integral in managing a lot of our logistics and inventory. Basically, he's got spreadsheets in his head, so. He's been great. Director of Entertainment is Josh Armstrong. He's probably been with Fog Fest for the longest. He's a longtime Pacifican native. However, this year will probably be his last year as he has since moved on and moved far out of the area to Lincoln. But he'll, he's already passing the torch on to a new, one of his business partners who will be taking over for him. Josh organizes all the music and books, the bands, as well as setting up the stages, et cetera, sound systems and all that. Kaitlyn Quadra is our new Director of Media. She's the owner of Salt and Stone on Palmetto Avenue. She has a deep background in marketing, and she's taken over all of our social media marketing and has been doing a great job with that. Her husband, Adam Quadra, has taken on Director of Security. He's a former police officer for the City of San Francisco, and he's now doing security for the private sector. So, we've, he's been really great in helping us rework some of our security and safety measures. That being said, I wanted to point out that this year's Board has really been concentrating on bringing an emphasis to safety for the event. And we've implemented several changes to make the event safer. We've, first of all, we've added bigger and more easily accessible ADA parking at both the north and south end of Palmetto Boulevard. This will be part of the regular parking areas. We've also been requesting and will be adding additional seating and rest areas throughout the festival and mainly at the north and south end. This will help with people who have a little bit mobility issues, as well as parents and families that want an area to sit a little bit further away from the stages and loud music. Most importantly, we've been working with the Pacifica Police Department, and we are implementing a wristband system that will assist with separated kids and adults. The police wanted to emphasize that it's also for separated adults as last year they had several missing adults. But the wristbands will work as a, they'll have a matching number with the adult and the children, and that will be registered so that we have contact information for the parents. If we have any separated children, we can easily identify them, as well as identify their parents and get in contact, hopefully minimizing the amount of time spent looking for separated children, as well as having a safer way to identify if someone does go missing longer than usual. We're also bringing about, for the first time, we have electronic payments, which we'll be implementing at the parking areas, as well as through several of the Fog Fest-run booths, including the alcohol booths. The electronic payment systems will allow for credit debit and tap-to-pay systems in a few select locations. Provided that it works out well, we'll be rolling it out to the rest of the Fog Fest payment centers. This will allow for easier payment processing for attendees, as well as less cash handling for everyone, attendees, as well as the volunteers serving at the booths. We're also rolling out for this year several non-alcoholic drink options for adults, as well as children. The kids option will be what we're calling Ocean Water. It'll basically be a punch, a punch-type drink served with whipped cream and a little gummy treat on top as well. This year, we've also had several major challenges, as well as us being sort of a new board and learning to work together and organize this event for the first time. Our main challenge this year has really been navigating the new restrictions around biodegradable cups and serving utensils. The new local ordinance does not allow for biodegradable plastic cups and limits us using only fiber-based cups and service options. Unfortunately, such products simply do not exist that are appropriate for serving alcohol-based drinks, beer, wine, and cocktails, served out of paper cups doesn't really work too well. So, this has resulted in us having to change a lot of things. So, we'll be moving to canned cocktails and recyclable aluminum cups. This has resulted in a lot of increased costs and difficulties around refrigeration and increase for recycling with Recology. We think that we found some really adequate innovative solutions to this, but it really has been increased cost and effort. And just to kind of let you guys know, for other future events that may be having the same situations, we have found some solutions to these. Do, but I really want to thank some of our sponsors to help us out with that. For instance, Monta Grano Beverage Company, as well as 805 Beer, have really been integral in helping us find solutions as far as the non-biodegradable cup situation is going. Also, Salt Point Cocktails, which I believe is part of Monta Grano, will be providing a lot of the cocktails. And again, I want to thank them. They've been hugely generous in offering us donations, as well as equipment and services in regards to that. Also, Path Water will be sponsoring and donating. Tri Counties Bank, Vinfast Electric Car Dealer, Lit Cannabis Dispensary, Ceremony Ford, City Toyota, Recology, Cresco Equipment Rentals, Moose Lodge, Oceana Market, and Grocery Outlet have all been great in donating their time and resources. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Or comments, Council? Questions? Comments?
I'll go ahead and start. Thank you so much.
Yes.
For stepping up. It's not an easy job. I feel bad that I didn't hear about the cups beforehand. I don't know. I feel like we could have had a discussion about that. You know, it's a fog cutter.
Yeah.
Right? Like, people are used to certain things, so anyway. But I do want to thank you for having non-alcoholic drinks. That's really helpful for someone like me, who can't drink and won't drink. So, that's awesome. Thank you so much. And then, the wristbands, I appreciate too. And then I'm wondering, at some point, maybe they can actually include people who are 21 and older?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe next year.
Yeah, the wristband was both something that we had found as a challenge in years previous, as well as working with the Police Department, who spent a lot of time trying to help with assisted lost individuals. As I said, some of those were adults who had imbibed probably a bit too much, and the children were the ones searching for their adults. But we believe that this is a solution that will help everyone, as well as minimizing that time. For the cup situation, I know that that was part of a recent, I guess, ordinance that was passed some time ago. And I know that San Mateo County is adopting a similar ordinance, but Pacifica is adopting it earlier than the rest of the county. So, hopefully, technology and stuff will catch up to some of that and we'll meet it. But as I said, you know, we think we found some solutions that'll work, and we'll try it out this year and see.
I totally appreciate that. And thank you for thinking about age-friendly events by having seating. Hopefully, there'll be some shade as well. It's really important that our older adults have someplace to rest. It's a long day for folks, so thank you so much.
Yeah.
I just so look forward to cupping and going to the Fog Fest again. It's one of my favorite events that we have here. And I know, I listen to your meetings. I just listen. So, I know it's so much work. It's an amazing amount of work that you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank your Board and the new members and the outgoing members and your husband, Sue. I know this is a lot of work for a lot of people, and I appreciate how visionary you are in thinking and solving problems and looking at things for the future. I do have two questions. I heard you say the parade starts at nine, and I think, if I remember right, people are gathering at nine, but it starts at 10, just to make sure we have that right for the public.
I think you're right. I was told nine o'clock this year, but I will have to double-check on that because I thought it was 10 o'clock as well, and I was corrected today that it was nine. So, I will double-check that. I don't think that the time has changed, so I think it is the old time, and I think somebody was mistaken when they told me nine today.
And then I just wanted to ask about your dog policy. I was told last year that dogs weren't allowed, but I did see a fair number of people bringing dogs in. And so, if you can just clarify what the policy is and.
That is, that is correct. We have, it's been the policy for quite a few years. I think about 15 years now that Fog Fest does not allow dogs in the festival area. That being said, I know that a lot of people have sort of ignored that, and it's sort of been something that has been a compliance issue. And we've already put out on social media asking people not to bring their dogs to the event, but it's something that we'll have to address as it arises. But officially, dogs are not supposed to be at the event other than ADA and service animals.
Thank you so much. I can't wait to come this year.
And one thing I didn't, I neglected to mention was the Fog Cutters Ball is this Saturday. It's the week before Fog Fest. It'll be this Saturday at the Moose Lodge, September 16th. Tickets are now on sale for $30. Thank you.
Thanks, Paige. You know, I really just want to give a shout out to city staff as well for all of the work that our staff does in preparation for Fog Fest, meeting with staff, with board members, because there's just so much interface and the knowledge base and the history, and it's just a really great collaboration. And we're really grateful to staff for taking that extra time and to PD for all of the time that they'll be putting in on Fog Fest weekend. I know there's private security that you hire, but there are many PD, Pacifica Police Officers that will be on hand, not just in the parade. So, we're really looking forward to all of that. And I personally am very much looking forward to the future hoped-for operations and problem-solving with Recology of the Coast, our waste hauler and recycling partner in terms of how we begin to address this issue of compostable cups. Not really, because the whole pitch when we first heard about compostable cups was it has to say "compostable" on it. And then we turns, turns out compostable really has plastic. And so, what is the state-of-the-art of the industry and what can be done in the future to keep our Fog Fest more and more and more zero-waste? So, thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
And I think that my colleagues said pretty much everything that could be said, but as I said in the beginning, I really am quite excited for Fog Fest and looking forward to the celebration of our community and dancing a little bit with everybody else and having a good time that is well-earned after a long year for our community. So, thank you, everyone involved. I'm aware that not only John Beckmeyer, but Sue Beckmeyer participates in making sure that a lot happens during Fog Fest, to which I will say to you, next year, I will be happy when my time frees up a little bit to join you in that. Thank you so much, Paige, for being here, and do please thank the Board for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, this brings us to the consent calendar. Are there any Councilmembers who wish to pull an item from consent?
I was thinking, I'd like to pull item five just to get a quick, brief presentation from our Chief, Sarah Sua, since it's her first year with fireworks here.
Okay. Item number five is pulled. Any other Councilmembers wish to pull an item? If not, we'll go to public comments on items aside from number five. I have no cards in front of me. Elizabeth, is there anyone on the phone?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. I see a card coming up, so I will wait before I close public comment.
There's now a hand raised as well in the audience.
Okay, so I don't have any cards for general consent for items aside from number five. Elizabeth?
Erin Macias, would you like me to see if she's commenting on something from consent?
Absolutely. Erin, are you commenting on consent in general, items not number five?
I would love to get some clarification as to protocol here. Are we in the general public comment of non-agendized items?
No, we're in consent.
Okay, thank you. I will lower my hand.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Another hand is raised, Mayor.
Okay.
Jen?
Good evening, Council. Hopefully, you can hear me. We're putting my kids to bed, and of course, public comment opened right as we're arguing. My name is Jen Hanson from Lindemar. I first wanted to acknowledge Paige and the Fog Fest committees. That's amazing. I always look forward to that time of year as a born and raised Pacifican. That's the best time because all the friends and family and everybody who I grew up with have moved out of the area, and this is generally the one time of year they come back. And I just got a text message from my neighbor that my public comment has not been agendized, so, or has been pulled. So, I will hold my public comment for later.
21st century.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the public who has a comment on the consent calendar, except for item number five involving fireworks? Seeing no one, we will now close public comment on consent and bring it back to Council for comments or a motion on consent minus five.
I can make a motion. I move accepting, approving the consent calendar minus item five.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And the consent calendar minus item number five passes unanimously. The motion was made by Councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Councilmember Beer.
And that brings us to item number five, July 4th, Activities Report. Can we have a staff report, please?
Hi, Honorable Mayor, fellow Councilmembers. I'm Bill Glasgow, your police captain. Was there any specific questions that Council had regarding the staff report presented?
No, I was, well, there's one that I had asked separately that wasn't in the staff report, which was about fees for citations. Just, I just wanted the public to understand that we are charging, but also just kind of a general description of what transpired compared to other years and.
Yeah, just basically what it is in the report. There were some areas where there was increased calls for service. Other areas were decreased calls of service. Specifically, as it relates to the fees in which were collected, staff was able to provide us with the collection of about $11,000. There's still about eight individuals who have yet to pay those fees, and staff's working on collecting those fees as we speak.
Captain, appreciating that not everyone in the public, perhaps, has read the report and that fireworks largely are a matter of concern to a number of people, regardless of where they fall on the matter. If you could just give us a quick overview of maybe how this year's activities compared to other activities? Any instances of note?
Certainly. So, this year, the Pacifica Police Department issued 21 administrative citations for violations of either in possession of illegal fireworks and/or a combination of the social host ordinance in which we enviewed the illegal firework being ignited from the person's private property. As it relates to our calls for service during peak hours, as indicated in our report, firework calls only, we had about a 9% increase from last year, which results to about only eight calls for service that were increased from last year during that time. However, the total calls for service during non-peak times had increased, or actually decreased 34%.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Just on that point, Captain Glasgow, thanks so much for your notes and presentation. In regard to that packet, page 110, I'm looking at the table at the top of the page. I do believe we have a slight decimal point, and I'm going to ask our Assistant City Manager, who with her eagle eyes, to look at numbers. The total calls for service are 240 in 2022 and total calls for service of 242 in 2023. I think that, if I did my calculations right, is a 0.8% increase, which is slightly less than 1% increase, if I'm correct. I think there's a typo there.
I believe you're correct. Thank you for pointing that out.
And so, generally, I just want to observe that I was very pleased to see the numbers as they were. Definitely have to do some work with a couple of our groups. Obviously, they'll be in the penalty box. I do feel bad for the group that almost made their hours, and it really underscores the need to have a backup plan because my understanding is there was one family group that didn't come and do the time that they were supposed to do, and that is what tipped the balance below the number of people there to do the beach cleanup that day. So, it's important to have backups, like subs, in the wait, in the waiting. Or, the more the merrier, just have everybody come. I also want to point out that our 8% fee, while we've been charging that for a really long time at that rate, it seems to be holding. I was pleased to see that. Of course. Of course, I think PD had to work a little harder, stretch a little further. I know you're good at that, so you know, sorry that it had to be on the Fourth of July because it looks like there were two fewer, there are exactly two fewer officers brought in from other areas. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we, you know, there was a small surplus in the fee, 8% fee, but then again, folks worked super hard because they didn't have as much personnel. Thank you so much for your service on Fourth of July.
Thank you. It was a team effort with all staff members and community members to to have this a successful Fourth of July, so it took a team.
Any other questions from council on item number five? And I'll open it up to public comment if anyone from the public wishes to speak on number five. I have one card from Lynn Adams. If anyone else wishes to speak, feel free to fill out a yellow card in the back. They'll bring it up.
Yeah, I'd like to just commend the Public Works and the Police Department, especially Bill Glasgow, for organizing the cleanup teams. The follow-up cleanups were very successful and very well attended. Bill was fortunate to invite me in and I kind of reminded the teams the agreement, but also the opportunity they have to come learn and serve, right? And the volunteers came from all the groups with the right spirit and we were able to clean up entire districts and it was a very, very successful cleanup. And for the public, they clean up not only on the Fifth of July, but each team commits to coming to another cleanup. So we have three additional cleanups. The the follow-up was at Sharp Park and then the following week, the the second week after, was at Espinod and Lindemar. So those three beaches got a second cleanup and the volunteers did a really great job. And I I thought it was wonderful for them and us and the volunteers that joined the teams that came from the public to work together and to manage the amount of trash that was there. I mean, there was an exorbitant amount of trash. I think Lindemar had two three-quarter full dumpsters. Sharp Rockaway had a dumpster that was probably three-quarters, a half to three-quarters full as well. So that's a lot of trash that's out and about. A lot of the trash was by the barrels or by the garbage cans that were out on the beach. But obviously, when we got there, the parking lots were just strewn with stuff and it's dark when they're lighting the fireworks, so they can't see it. So it does take this effort. I was disappointed that there were green, the green balls that were in this year. That was part of the packs and they've, I guess, apparently it's voluntarily not used them in the packs, so that was an oversight, but it definitely was like tons of them that we found. So the next thing I would I would target would be the strict, the sticks, the pink sticks. So thank you to Public Works for managing it that following day and all the work that they did putting up, setting it up. And also thank you to the to Bill Glasgow, who coordinated all the groups and made everything so successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, do we have anyone with a hand raised?
Yes, Mayor, we have Cliff Lawrence has raised his hand.
Cliff, go ahead. I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I I so appreciate what these people do, these volunteers that go out there and what they've observed, I hope will be taken to heart and somebody will look into and realize that we may need to make some adjustments. But overall, I was personally not displeased. I was pleased with this year's community response was more respective than maybe in some previous years and that was good. I thank the whole community for their efforts in being good community citizens and yet celebrating the day. I thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberations or motions.
I move that we approve item five with a huge thanks to Public Works and police and the Beach Coalition.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Item number five moved by Councilmember Bowles and seconded by Councilmember Beckmeyer passes unanimously.
And I'll echo that note of thanks to our staff and to our community volunteers. Thank you. That brings us to public comments on items not on the posted agenda. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided however that only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. We prefer if you make your remarks to the council as a body rather than any particular member. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under public comments on items not on the posted agenda. For example, if you should happen to be up there and you ask us a question, we are not immediately going to respond to your question. It's a passive exercise. We do, however, sometimes address questions after the public comment period has passed, so by all means, stick around. We do sometimes address some of the comments we hear if we wish to clarify. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. Persons addressing the council, please adhere to that three-minute time limit and please be courteous of those around you, otherwise there's various unpleasant legal wording that comes into play that I'd rather not have to use. So with that, I have one card from Lynn Adams for general communications. And anyone who'd like to speak is welcome to. Please fill out a yellow card in the back.
Good evening, Council and staff. I am honored to be here and thank you for having me two times. I wanted to just, first of all, report that as of September 11th, 2023, the Pacific Beach Coalition has engaged 8,041 volunteers and removed 31,000 pounds of trash. The year is not over. We're up to about 100, close to 125,000 cigarette butts that we've collected and recycled. And Saturday, we invite the public and would like to invite everyone to participate in California Coastal Cleanup Day. And whether or not they can come, I'm not sure how we show this. There we go. California Coastal Cleanup Day is Saturday, September 16th, here in Pacifica, Daly City, for our sites in Daly City and Montero and because of Fog Fest on the 23rd. The rest of the state is celebrating a lot of the sites and most of the sites on the 23rd, but with Fog Fest, we need to move ours. So we will have a celebration at Lindemar from 10:30 to 11:30 to honor the volunteers that are there, to kick off an event that we have called the Butt Blitz. So we have the Butt Blitz, which is starting on Coastal Cleanup Day, Saturday, September 16th, and goes through Halloween, October 31st. So far, on through 2019 to 2022, we've collected nearly 150,000 butts on those four Butt Blitzes. And I'm hoping that we can reach 60, 70,000. And if all of us take the time to go outside and look for even one half hour, we, in a hotspot, we could easily exceed that number. So if you'd like, I invite you to look up the Butt Blitz. You not only pick up butts, you can bring them to any of the Pacific Beach Coalition collection stations. We have about four in the city. And or you can bring them to any beach cleanup, which we have cleanups every Saturday at different locations. So I invite you to join us on Saturday, September 16th. And even if you can't join us at one of the sites, please go out and find your cigarette butts around wherever you are, collect them separately, bring them to Seaweed Holistic. They have a little collection ca case, there's a collection case, can on on Beaumont Boulevard and there's other ones down in the in Lindemar area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Elizabeth?
Mayor, we have three hands raised. The first is Cliff Lawrence.
All right, Cliff Lawrence, go ahead. Please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. This is Cliff Lawrence. Again, I want to thank all the members of the council for your efforts, your dedication. Again, I can't imagine how you do it, but I I hope others will step up and see that this is an opportunity for a civic contribution. What I want to talk about tonight was SB 330. It's my understanding at this moment, we have two applications, one possibly expired. But the other, the other part of it is, this is something new to us, probably new to everybody. And there's a lot of question as to what impact this could have on our existing regulations and protections that we have put in place to help protect Pacifica. In mind specifically, the Hillside Prevention, Hillside Preservation District, HPD. Now, we have, we do have, some of these applications are obviously coming in with slope issues, which should bring them in the purview of HPD. But we have not heard from city council or from planning department or from city legal what we might expect when SB 330 comes in conflict with HPD.
One minute.
And I hope that we can hear that, get some clarification, if there is any, what the city opinion is going to be on this before we get involved in some kind of lawsuit. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next hand raised is Erin Macias.
Go ahead. Please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have one minute.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, Council and staff. I am Erin Macias from Lindemar and I would like to comment on one of the recent housing element drafts. Please feel free to stop me if this is agendized. The the ADUs were not compliant with state law. One of the issues of concern brought up in this state review was the issue of parking. We currently have a permitted ADU on my street with an additional J-ADU that has been nothing short of a parking nightmare. There is an existing ADU that the city was aware of and yet they permitted units two and three anyway, stating there was no reason to deny the project. So therefore, that brings three ADUs on one residential property in residential neighborhood R1. So this really brings an issue of the approval of ADUs without an approved housing element. From my lenses, this is insane. Concrete trucks facing oncoming traffic, earth movers damaging asphalt, traffic at a standstill, noise, parking, environmental disturbances disturbances in the open space behind them. This is all part of the conversation. So why is the city approving any ADU, J-ADU, when we have known non-permitted ADUs and we are not in compliance with state requirements anyway? So building a duplex on a single-family home lot should be met with extreme scrutiny as it permanently alters the residential zoning and the quality of life for the residents. I ask that you please rapidly address the ADU language and address the non-compliance issues so that we can have a balanced approach to ADUs while enforcing the non-permitted illegal construction or non-permitted rentals.
One minute.
Which are serious safety issue for the renters in our community. In San Francisco, the fines for non-permitted construction are 10 times the permit fee and they generate quite a quality revenue. They also discourage illegal construction. The city is missing out on permit fees and fines. We need to seriously rethink how we address non-permitted construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next hand raised is from Jen.
Jen, go ahead. Please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
This is Jen Hansen from Lindemar, calling to acknowledge the ADU in the sixth half draft element. First, I wanted to thank Christine for her continued work to make sure that Pacificans are aware of what's going on and submit, make sure to attach these public documents and bring awareness to people like myself who haven't been following along as closely as I wish. I was very happy to see that the state mentioned parking as not being addressed because, like Erin, I, we have, are affected by the same property that has a non-permitted ADU and is now building two more on the property and we already have parking issues because of the homeowner and the amount of vehicles he owns and the amount of construction and driveways are now being blocked. We cannot move recreational vehicles, trailers, boats and things like that because they are now moving their cars all over the place and now they are going to have two more ADU units with cars that have to be parked in the street because when those two new units were approved, there was no parking required on site. So now we're going to have seven plus two or three more vehicles. And I really wish, I think also the size of the building was out of compliance. It was supposed to be, I think the max was 1,600 square feet and this is supposed to be 1,700 square feet. And I feel like because this was a variance, the neighbors should have been notified so we could bring up these issues before construction began instead of now having to deal with it after it's already been permitted. So I really do, moving forward with the draft housing element, appreciate and hope that people continue to look into the revisions that need to be made. The revisions that need to be made to the draft housing element to bring it into compliance with California state law and taking into consideration how these ADUs are going to affect neighbors. I appreciate everyone's time and energy. I know this is a thankless, or hopefully not a completely thankless, but it's a tireless job and I appreciate everything council does and I hope everyone has a good evening.
Thank you, Jen.
There are no other hands, Mayor.
And I have no other cards, so I will close public comment at this time and bring it back to council for council communications. Can I have lights, please? Or hands? I'll take hands if not lights. Councilmember Beckmeyer?
My report is very brief because at a city meeting that I was attending last week, I left my bag there and it's still there because I haven't had time to go pick it up, so I don't have my notebook, so can't regale you with all the details because I do not keep them in my head. I've been writing a little list, like, what did I do for the last two weeks? What did I do? So I can tell you that I did have three meetings related to my work with the Coastal Cities Group. One was with the County of San Mateo. It was planners and the director of One Shoreline was there, Len Maderman. And so we were talking about what implementing sea level rise policies is like for the County of San Mateo, basically, what their experience has been. This has been the purpose of these strategic kind of stakeholder meetings, to get direct feedback on the experience. We also had a very enlightening meeting with the City of Santa Cruz about some strategies they've put in place for monitoring the changing conditions. Very intrigued by that. And it was funded by a grant from the Coastal Commission. And it was funded by a grant from the Coastal Commission. I took great careful note of. So was out of town for Labor Day weekend. I did attend the Beautification Advisory Committee meeting where my bag is still sitting. And they spent a lot of time talking about some great plans they're going to do for Fog Fest. The city has a booth and has different elements, including public works, and the Beautification Advisory Committee will be there with some interactive things for folks to do with picture-taking and such, and some posters about the winners of beautification awards. And I'm just putting in a plug for the next deadline for beautification awards is at the end of the month. So if you're interested in submitting your own or somebody you know, residential and commercial, there are two separate categories, please go to the city's website, and there's a form there and all the procedures for what to do. Just last quick note, I had the opportunity to attend the 50/50 exhibit at Sanchez Art Center. Took the opportunity to participate in the fundraiser part of it so that I could see all of the installations fully intact. That's the first time I've ever seen that, and it was so mind-blowing and so amazing. Truly, even my husband enjoyed it. So it was just great. No, he really did. It was really, we had a nice, a nice break from all the action, enjoying that. And unfortunately, a family illness prevented me from attending Mark Berman's coffee when he was here in town. But I'm sure other council members will speak about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowles.
Thanks, Tager. Mary and I met with our consultants for the Sharp Park Seawall, the Bee Burp meeting. Am I, oh, sorry, I'm going to start it again. Councilmember Beer and I met with our consultants for the Sharp Park Seawall, the Bee Burp. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we have meetings coming up both this week at, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the community center. There'll be a presentation by the consultants, followed by time, you know, reviewing boards and drawings in different stations, and then, and then reporting back on community feedback. They're specifically getting feedback on the basic layout of, and placement of the walls and amenities, so things like play structures and bike paths and benches and, you know, dog areas and things like that. So really hoping to get a lot of community members there to give feedback. And that same meeting will also be held on Zoom on the 27th of this month. So if you can't make it in person, that's an easy way to participate.
Christine, can you give the date and time for the one this week?
Oh, the in-person meeting is this Wednesday. Sorry, what day is that? The 13th at the community center from 6:00 to 8:00. And then September 27th, which is also a Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 on Zoom. And I'm sure the connect with Pacifica and other places will be sharing those links. Just to add to Len's comments about, so I met with the Pacific Beach Coalition too, and the Coastal Cleanup Day. This time of year is really important because it's about cleaning streets and drains and so forth before the rains hit because anything that's left gets washed to the ocean. So even if you can't participate at an exact event, you know, look around you at your drains and pick up what you can. And we also discussed the need for some trash cans in a few places and dog poo bags, which I forwarded to the city manager. I had my first little orientation for the San Mateo County Leadership Training Program. That's a nine-month program that I've been selected to participate in, which is a combination of civic leaders, business leaders, and nonprofits looking to solve issues in our cities and in the county. So we actually have a two-day orientation session this week, which I'm really excited about. And then our first real session will be on economic development. So if you have some ideas and things, come see me. And then I've been working and meeting with residents about our airplane noise letter to the FAA, and should be wrapping that up this week. And we'll be sending a link. It's, we also really encourage people to file their own report with the FAA. It's really easy to do, and we'll share that information, just to share your own lived experience and what you experienced, you know, with noise, especially anything that wakes you up or, you know, affects your health. And, and then I just, a couple of other things. So in terms of affordable housing, I've had a meeting with Penny Nixon, who is the official San Mateo County Faith Community Liaison, and will be attending a conference with her later in October. But, and also following SB 4 as it goes through the state. And this is to allow churches and other religious institutions by right to build affordable housing projects. So basically 100% affordable minus a few units for their own staff and so forth. So that's a really exciting ordinance coming through the state. And so any faith communities that are interested, feel free to reach out to me for more information. And then September is Transit Month. So I know the Climate Committee is, will be doing some things at Fog Fest and surveying residents. But we're also meeting with Commute.org, our planning director, Christian Murdock, and I, and a couple of people on the Climate Committee next week to hear results from Pacificans. There were 882 people that filled out their responses about their commutes. And so we're trying to organize where people go and whether a shuttle might make sense, you know, as we look to improve our transportation options in the future.
That's a lot.
They, you know, I think, yeah, I think the social media helped get the word out, but also, and this is something, you know, interesting for, for staff and for our own consideration, they offered like one $250 prize, but that was enough, you know, to get, I think, I think it was over 6,000 responses through the county, but that's a large portion that are ours. So I'm very proud of that.
I'm sure you had something to do with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beer.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here with us tonight. I appreciate it so much. I feel like I've had a busy couple of weeks. First of all, I had an enlightening and really important meeting with our new Chief of Police, Chief Sarah Sua. So thank you so much for spending so much time with me. I learned so much about you, and I just want to comment to our community that this is a chief of police that is worth getting to know. So please take the time, you know, reach out to her, visit with her, find out what her values are, what she's seeing for our community, and how we can create something new through her. So, thank you for that. It made me a little emotional. It was a really good meeting. I attended Senator Becker's opioid town hall, which was really great. There was a whole bunch of information about opioid overdose and the trends that are going on across our county. So please take a look at that. It's widely out there. Just Senator Becker's opioid town hall. In that same vein, I also attended the overdose awareness night that was on August 31st. That is put on by Bonnie McNamara and her team. It's a really sombering event where, you know, we're honoring folks that have died through overdose. And just recently, there was another young person who died in Pacifica of an accidental overdose. And so it's really important that we keep talking about this. And I've gotten a few comments about, oh, well, they're not doing anything in the schools, so I'm going to switch my hat really quickly and let you know what is going on in the schools. So we are doing overdose awareness and all kinds of prevention work in all of the health classes, in all of the high schools, in all of the seventh and eighth grade classrooms. We have brief intervention services for folks who want to stop, quit, like if they're, for kids who are just starting to use. We have tons of services at the Daily City Youth Health Center, so please know that there are resources available. Reach out to us. We can help you get connected to that. I attended the Coast Pride Board meeting where we welcomed a new board member of our very own, Lauren Smith from Pacifica. We're super happy to have you, Lauren. She brought a whole bunch of energy already to our board. I also met with Ray Mueller and a couple of members from the Coast Pride Board to talk about funding for this tiny little agency that only has $125,000 a year. I just want everyone to take a breath and like, that is nothing, and they're doing so much work in our community with our students and our teachers, training and pride, and oh, boy. So think about supporting them. Thank you, Councilmember Bowles, for talking about our Bee Burp meeting. So that's coming up. On October 5th, the Pacifica Peace People will be hosting Pacifica Talks About Race. So it's a collaboration between the Pacifica Peace People, Pacifica School District and Jefferson Union High School District. It's going to be one of a few series of these conversations, so please feel free to attend October 5th at IBL from 7:00 to 8:30. I attended the Mark Berman event, so we had a lot of community came out to talk to Assembly Member Berman and then asked really good questions and, you know, let off a little steam, and I thought he handled everything really well. He is our Assemblyman. He's really accessible. If you have questions for him, reach out. His staff is really great. They will get right back to you. It was really good to hear about age-friendly strategies at the Fog Fest. I'll say that again because I was really happy to hear that. Our Age Friendly Task Force here in Pacifica is going to be creating a work plan coming up. So there's going to be some opportunities for folks to join in on the age-friendly work that's going to be happening. So listen to hear a little bit more about that. And I want to thank Cindy Abbott and Dr. Bill Michaelis for collaborating on a project through the Pacifica Collaborative. Last year, we talked a lot about the hate that had been happening in our community, and we talked a lot about how we can work together to kind of put information and messaging out about love and kindness instead. And we tried really hard to get things together last year, but it didn't play out. But Cindy was able to find a grant, and it's called Art for a More Peaceful and Just Community. And so we're going to be rolling that out. There's going to be opportunities for every sector to do some kind of art. You know, there's a lot of different kinds of art, and it's what is kindness to you? What does kindness look like to you? And so I'm really looking forward to the city participation in that. We have the corner over there in our council chambers that we have set aside for community art. So I would love the opportunity to start talking about that and how we can use this grant to fill some messages about kindness and love over there in that corner, maybe put some messages out on Connect Pacifica. So there's a lot of ways that we can talk about kindness, spread love.
Mary, on that, will you be sure to loop in PSD? Because that's a huge theme in our schools now as well.
They're part of the collaborative. We got to meet the new superintendent. It was the first time.
Councilmember Vado Lous.
I was personally very busy the last two weeks, but I did attend the coffee with Mark Berman, and I enjoyed being there and being out and seeing people and listening to what people's complaints were and the positives that they had. Also, today is 9/11, and I want us to think about the families, the loved ones, the people who've passed, the people who are still suffering, and remember, always remember. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll pick up there because I too wanted to start with 9/11. It's poignant to have a council meeting on this of all days, and I do take a moment every year to reflect where I was as that moment of time was happening because it occurred to me as I realized what was beginning around me to wind up in the middle of a field on my college campus with scriptures in my lap. And in that moment, processing what I knew was a very large moment and one which I had no clarity on. And still, I think that we can look at the opacity that that moment created for our planet, let alone our country. It's sobering to note that apparently the first responders have died as many as the Americans who lost their lives in the initial attack. And so thank you for the many lives that have been given and the families that were affected and ultimately just taking a moment to pause for the sake of our nation. Thank you, Mr. Burgett, for being here today. May you continue to be in good health, sir. As always, I like to take a moment to remember Ukraine, who are fighting for their freedom in this moment in time. And with that, the activities I've been engaged with, after the last council meeting, I attended the Rotary Club meeting in which Ray Mueller was speaking the next morning. I hung out with him for a couple of constituent calls he took, one of which had something to do with roads, and the other of which actually happened at the Sanchez Art Center. I got to experience Cindy Abbott telling our county supervisor about all that the Sanchez Art Center is doing, which even though I frequent the place not too rarely, I got that backstage view that I don't often get straight from Cindy. And our colleague, Mike, our former colleague Mike O'Neill was there as Ray's staff person. So it was nice to be in very good company that morning, no matter how fatigued I might happen to have been. Later in the day, Mary and I attended the Cora presentation about Speak Up, which essentially is a training program for various businesses in town. I think we're probably going to hear this at council. A part of what I've been doing since I heard that meeting was talking to various not-for-profit agencies in town to see if there might be a collective community buy-in to the program to make it all the more apparent what our community values. And so I'm sure there'll be more about that later on. On the 30th, I taped the third episode of the mayor's office with Anita Reese. If you haven't seen the episode with Ray Mueller yet, it is on YouTube currently. You'll see the third episode come out this Friday night at 8:30 on PCT 26, and that will also be on YouTube. I played a game with Anita in which I imagined myself as one who was not as friendly toward those on hardship amongst us, and a good conversation was had, and hopefully in a heartfelt way. I attended the Community Overdose Awareness Night with Mary. I followed up with city manager shortly thereafter to confirm that we had talked about beginning the process of a formal community conversation around substance use issues, and it looks like that'll be coming down the pike next year. So stay tuned for that. Had a couple of constituent meetings along the way. Attended the Peninsula Clean Energy Surplus Funds Committee meeting. What this is, is we've come to the conclusion at Peninsula Clean Energy that we have a little bit more money on hand than is probably proper for a not-for-profit agency who is serving the community. And so we're trying to find ways to do the most positive impact, whether that mean potentially rebates to folks who fall on the lower end of the economic spectrum or helping folks to electrify who might need the help. We're talking about the various options, so stay tuned to that. We'll be making proper recommendations to the board sometime in the not-too-distant future, the PCE board, that is. Attended City Selection Committee. This is essentially when the mayors in the area get together to appoint various regional leaders, city council members to regional boards. It was a very speedy meeting in which James Coleman of South San Francisco was appointed to the Heart Board. And congratulations, James. I also attended the 50 by 50 art show at Sanchez. It is my favorite art show that I attend yearly, almost like clockwork. And I agree with Councilmember Beckmeyer, it's a wonderful opportunity to get in on the first possible night. So you see these 50 by 50. So artists are tasked with doing 50 works over 50 days. They're given these tiles that usually they adhere to, but not always. But it winds up with the same footprint on the wall and they really are spectacular to see. Attended that coffee with Mark Berman as the person introducing him to our community. Had a lot of fun doing that and answering some questions when he wasn't speaking while we were enjoying coffee and pastries that the assembly member was kind enough to provide. It was a really good example of how accessible the higher levels of government can be. While it's not necessarily as easy to pick up a cell phone and get through to him directly, you will always be able to get through to his office directly. And yes, he will also take calls from you too when opportunity arises. It further solidified our new relationship with our new assembly member. And I think that at least I was impressed, we're in quite good hands. And then this morning, no, this afternoon, I had the opportunity to play bocce ball with our staff. We're doing an intercity bocce ball tournament. I got to be in on the first game, realizing that nobody in our city apparently knows how to play from staff or council. At least it seemed like most of us didn't know. My understanding is there are members of the community and specifically seniors who are quite good at it. So I might have to sit in on one of their games later now that I know what the game is. So that's the report out of the week. Coming up, I already said that our third episode of The Mayor's Office is coming up this Friday at 8:30. On the 16th, along with the beach cleanup, is the Rancho de Fiesta at the Sanchez Adobe from 12 to 4. So it's this Saturday, the 16th, from 12 to 4, Sanchez Adobe. It's a favorite of mine. It's almost like a Renaissance fair, but with Rancho times. And it's fun. It's just good wholesome fun. And as y'all heard earlier, Fog Fest coming up on the 23rd and 24th of this month. And the Fog Cutters Ball on the 16th also. Thank you, Mayor Protam. So that's my report. And can we have a staff report, staff communications, please?
There is no communication this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing? Well, hello Assistant City Manager.
If you insist.
I insist, I insist.
I do have one update. So the city actually had a kickoff meeting today for ERP implementation software. So that's a major project. As you know, we've discussed that as part of the strategic plan. So we had a citywide meeting today, so kicked off this project. So it's going to be a long ride, but it's going to be exciting once we get there.
Even something that might seem as benign as software updates, it sounds like it's really quite extensive. And I think that as somebody who spent a lot of time not up here, it's really helpful to learn and hear about some of the mechanics of inner-city workings. It demystifies some of the processes, even if it doesn't seem.
Correct. So that was a long process. So the city completed needs assessment and the council recently approved the contract with Tyler Technologies for our new financial and HRMS. So it stands for Human Resources Management System software. So that will cover all financial modules. We are replacing the software and it's going to be a long process for about 12 months.
Thank you very much. So there are no public hearings tonight. Council, do we need a five-minute break before we continue on or shall we muscle through? Very good. With no further ado, our consideration item tonight, our one and only, is a discussion of the tree permit fee. Proposed action, receive presentation and provide direction to the city manager about whether or not permits for substantial trimming, encroachment or removal of private trees should be subsidized by the general fund. And when y'all arrive, I favor a staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, well, the city staff, our team is getting together right now. So I want to introduce this item with a brief background and then turn it to Planning Director Murdock and the rest of the city team to give staff presentation. As you may remember, the city council adopted the master fee schedule for the current fiscal year on June 10th. The master fee schedule included the fee in amount of $1,000 that represented the cost of reviewing issuance of the tree permit that is not associated with the either building permit or discretionary permit application. So in other words, we call it a standalone tree permit for one or more trees. Following the adoption of the master fee schedule, members of City Pacifica expressed concerns that the fee might be too high and may result in illegal pruning or removal of trees. Although now we're three months into the fiscal year and so far we do not have any evidence that supports this concern. Some of you, two council members, requested that the tree permit fee be brought back to council for consideration of reducing it. And before I turn this to staff to go over presentation and potential options, I would like to ask the council, after you hear staff presentation, to first consider the broader policy factors related to whether the tree permit pertaining to private property matters should be subsidized by the city general fund, as we do not currently subsidize other private matters, except for certain sewer lateral replacement fees to encourage replacement of our H2 laterals to improve sewer collection system. But again, those subsidies are in sewer fund, not the general fund. So your policy decision tonight, whether to subsidize the fee or not, calls for equation of why or if other private property permits should also be subsidized or not. So after Director Murdock and Director Palacio and Peterson will go over the presentations, I, it would be very helpful to staff to first hear council's deliberation on this broader policy matter, whether the tree permit pertaining to private property should be subsidized by general fund. And stated in the staff report, the city manager does not recommend providing the subsidy. However, again, this is your policy direction. And if supported by majority of city council, staff is also prepared to present several options for your considerations on how such subsidy may apply. With that, I would like to turn it to Director Murdock to go over the presentation. And again, you have also Public Works Director Lisa Peterson and Bob Palacio, being our director, here to answer any questions.
Thank you Assistant City Manager Carter. Good evening Mayor and Councilmembers. Planning Director Christian Murdock. As mentioned, I'm here with my colleagues, who are the Directors of Public Works Department and Parks Beaches and Recreation Department. All three of our departments have different roles in implementing the city's tree permit process. So as mentioned tonight, we're here to discuss the tree permit fee and determine whether a fee subsidy is appropriate as a policy matter. And if the council decides that is appropriate to consider and discuss further, talk about the various options and give direction to staff to return at a future meeting. For a quick background, we're talking about the tree permit fee that's applicable to the city's tree permit ordinance that was enacted in 2022 called the Tree Preservation Ordinance or the TPO. I've called them the old versus new ordinance. The old ordinance was known as the Heritage Tree Ordinance and it was in place since 1990. The key differences sort of between how the ordinances regulate and protect trees, the Heritage Tree Ordinance had a 50-inch circumference trigger for classification as a heritage tree and excluded eucalyptus trees from that designation regardless of their size and didn't require an arborist report as part of its application process. The Tree Preservation Ordinance, in contrast, has a 12-inch diameter requirement. So it's much more inclusive in terms of the types of trees that would be considered protected trees. And similarly excludes eucalyptus trees as well as any other species determined as invasive by the California Invasive Plant Council. And the Tree Preservation Ordinance, importantly, as it relates to the fee discussion tonight, does require an arborist report as well as an ISA basic tree risk assessment to be completed as part of a technical package of information submitted to the city to support an application for a tree permit. This is just a different way to try to visualize the old versus the new ordinance process. The original, or rather, the old ordinance process under the Heritage Tree Ordinance, relatively basic and streamlined, application submitted, city staff, the parks superintendent would go out and look at the tree in the field, offer an opinion on whether or not it seemed like the tree needed to be removed or substantially trimmed, and then advance the approval process if that review was favorable to the tree removal or substantial trimming, go through the notification and any appeal processes and conclude the process. The new process, similar starting point with the tree application being submitted. However, there's internal routing from the city staff to the third-party contract arborist consultant, who then performs a technical review of the arborist report, the track, the tree risk assessment questionnaire, similar terminology for the ISA tree risk assessment, photos, diagrams, and sometimes performs a site visit to get further information about the trees in question. Once that review is completed, oftentimes there's a need for more information or something is missing and identified by the arborist review. Those comments are sent back to the applicant. That process repeats one or more times until all information is submitted to understand the technical details and then a determination can be made. And only at that point can the tree approval notification and appeal processes play out and then final approval be granted. So it's a much more intensive technical review process as well as administratively intensive with the back and forth between the city and the applicant. And then to put a finer point on the discussion for tonight, the Heritage Tree Ordinance had a $238 fee as of the 2022 master fee schedule and as mentioned, didn't involve any detailed technical review, whereas the Tree Preservation Ordinance has a $1,000 fee on the 2023 master fee schedule and does involve a detailed technical review by a qualified arborist of an arborist report and an ISA basic tree risk assessment as two of the required technical informational components in the new tree protection ordinance. The new ordinance review process, as mentioned, involves this application intake, routing, notices and final approval. That's a simplification of a rather intensive back and forth process as I described earlier. The multiple reviews that may be required add to the time and the cost as well as the requirement for the technical review. The $1,000 fee that's in place now for a tree protection ordinance permit includes 1.25 hours of estimated arborist review time, 2.75 hours of administrative processing, again, that back and forth and the public notification and appeal process component. It's charged currently at the $250 per hour staff hourly rate as justified by a prior comprehensive city fee study and all comes together to support that $1,000 permit fee. It helps sometimes to understand the city's processes and fee costs in relation to other jurisdictions in our area. Staff has assessed six other San Mateo County jurisdictions for comparable tree permit fees and other related costs. As you can imagine, the ordinances differ and that makes comparing the costs difficult. But to the best extent that we could, we tried to summarize apples to apples for these jurisdictions. I think the takeaway from this table is that there are cities that charge less, in some cases around $200 to $300 for a comparable tree permit. And there are cities that charge much more, up to perhaps several thousands of dollars for removal of a typical two-tree application. We tried to create something that wasn't the simple single tree, given that many of our tree permit applications involve the removal of multiple trees. So you can see in the middle, our best simplification and summary of non-refundable fees associated with these other jurisdictions. Most of them charge a per-tree fee, whereas the City of Pacifica's tree permit fee is a single fee regardless of the number of trees that might be associated with that application. And based on that per-tree fee, you can see how those other cities, if multiple trees are involved, the costs can escalate rather quickly. Using again, a simple example of a two-tree removal, the most expensive community we identified was Menlo Park. And Director Palacio can elaborate on some of these figures if there's a desire for that. And I think importantly, the City of San Mateo, as we assessed it, had what they call a refundable tree deposit related to the replanting of a comparable large-sized tree to replace a protected tree. However, what we've gathered is that more than half of the applicants for those tree permits don't ultimately collect their refundable deposit because the costs of the replacement trees are much greater than just foregoing the refundable deposit. So you can see that that $100 per tree fee actually turns out to be, you know, over $1,000 in this hypothetical example. In City of Pacifica, at $1,000 is somewhere in the middle, depending on how you conceptualize the different costs that are associated there. And what we did find in the tree permit research is that some of the communities with lower permit fees are significantly subsidizing those tree permit processes.
Can we have clarification on that 7,000 per tree number from Menlo Park? Because that just sticks right out. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Big Stick, Bob Palacio, Director of Parks Beaches Recreation. So in Menlo Park, again, they are a bit of an outlier, but what they, they will decide the size of tree that you're going to put in. So if you want to remove a heritage tree to do a project because it's, you know, it's, you want to do something with your garage and you're going to take that tree out, they'll decide whether or not that tree is worth $200 or it's worth $7,000. If it's $7,000, you need to pay upfront that cost or put, and once you, or once you put in a tree that is the equivalent of that, then they would refund you the money. But if not, you would not get that money back.
Are we talking about like a fully grown redwood?
They have a, they have a list. I can be more specific and send that to you, but they have a list of trees that, that are mature trees that they would require you to put in a similar sized tree into that space. And so their fees can be exorbitant. I had even heard one arborist had told me that they did a project that was about $35,000 in Menlo Park. So they don't have many tree removals there, is what I'm told.
Thank you. And so moving on from that background information on the current tree permit process and prior heritage tree permit process and comparable jurisdictional tree permit costs. As Assistant City Manager Carter mentioned, there are a few high-level policy questions that we would ask the council to consider before moving on to discussion or consideration of potential options as to how the tree permit fees could be subsidized. The first key policy question is, should tree permits be subsidized by the city's general fund? As I've mentioned at a prior city council meeting, and you've probably gleaned from the report, there are significant costs associated with administration of the city's current tree protection ordinance. Changing the permit fee doesn't change the cost, it just changes who's paying for the cost of administering the ordinance. And so what a subsidy would be in effect is a payment of general fund money to this as a policy action and priority by the city council. It doesn't reduce the cost, it just shifts the responsibility for payment. The second key policy question is, does a reduced permit fee help achieve the policy outcomes intended by the tree protection ordinance such that a subsidy is warranted? If the intent is to encourage the preservation of as many trees as possible, there's an economic argument to make that reducing the cost might increase the number of people pursuing tree removal permits. And so the council may ask, does subsidizing the removal of trees support the policy intent of the ordinance, which is to protect and maintain significant trees? And the third key policy question is, does subsidizing this fee calling to question why other private property permit fees are not also subsidized? With the exception of the sewer lateral replacement fee that Assistant City Manager Carter mentioned, staff was not able to identify any other permit associated with private property maintenance and improvement that's subsidized by the City of Pacifica. And there's a very specific and historic reason for why sewer lateral replacements continue to be subsidized in this city, whereas other permits continue to be subsidized in this city, whereas other permits associated with property maintenance and improvement are not subsidized by the city. And so that would be a key change in terms of the city's long-term past practices associated with review of private property permits. Due to the meeting format tonight, we aren't exactly able to stop there and allow the city council to deliberate, so in the interest of getting the information out there for the council and the public, I'll now shift to a brief discussion of the potential subsidy options if the council's later discussion progresses to this stage. As outlined in the staff report, we've identified three options to help shape the city council's discussion if we get to that point tonight. Of course, as acknowledged in the staff report, other variations are possible, but we tried to identify, you know, at least three key options that might advance the discussion. And all of the cost estimates contained in the staff report and presented in my presentation tonight are based on an estimation of 50 to 60 tree permits being processed annually. That's the historical range between the heritage tree permit and year-to-date, or heritage tree ordinance, rather, and year-to-date tree protection ordinance levels of activities that we've identified in our records. The first option is the ongoing subsidy option. The new fee, the $1,000 tree permit fee, includes city staff and consultant costs. The city staff costs, while relatively small as a part of the $1,000 tree permit, are already included in the city's general fund budget, although the tree permit fee currently seeks recovery of those costs for time dedicated to tree permit processing. The option-one ongoing subsidy option would subsidize those fees by not charging cost recovery as part of the tree permit fee for the $187.50 that are assumed to be spent on city staff time associated with the processing. The estimated cost in the first year would be $9,000 to $11,000, and year one, two, and three costs would total around $30,000 to $35,000. And this would be an ongoing expense of option one. It would be a perpetual subsidy if enacted by the city council, and, you know, would have additional costs in future years. Option two, we're calling the phase-in option. The new fee of $1,000 is four times higher than the old fee, which was $238. This option would allow time for the community to adjust to the fee, and it could incentivize folks to undertake deferred tree work, such as tree trimming or removal of old trees or trees that might not be in a top condition any longer, before the fees fully increase. This is a costlier option than option one, but it does achieve the full fee in the fourth fiscal year, which is a positive in staff's assessment on this option. And I do want to highlight that the table that was included in the staff report inadvertently overestimated the general fund subsidy. So this fee, the table in this slide, rather, shows the corrected general fund subsidy that would result from this. So the costs are slightly lower than were indicated in the staff report. And then option three is the subsidize-only pruning permits option. This one would incentivize tree maintenance by providing a tree permit fee subsidy only for those tree permit applications related to substantial pruning. Those are tree permit applications that would prune more than 15% of the structural component of a tree. That's a minority of tree permit applications that have been submitted under the new ordinance, about 10% of applications. In other words, five to six applications per year. And the estimated cost for this option three would be around $3,000 to $4,000 in year one, and $6,000 to $7,000 in years one, two, and three. And so to help visualize the cost differences between options one, two, and three, you can see in blue the year-one costs associated with each option, and in red, the combined year-one, two, and three costs for each of these options. Option three being the least costly, option one being in the middle, and option two being the most costly. To be fair, however, we do need to recognize option two phases out the subsidy by the fourth year, whereas options one and three would have ongoing costs to the general fund that could make those costs greater than option two over time. So the city manager's recommendation is to maintain the existing tree permit fee and not to subsidize the cost of tree permits. However, if the later council discussion and deliberation does want to explore a potential subsidy, the alternative action that would be recommended by the city manager would be to delay consideration of the subsidy until the next fiscal year. There is already work in the current fiscal year work plan to identify process improvements to help streamline implementation of the tree protection ordinance that could have the effect of reducing the costs, which we would bring forward in a future master fee schedule, fee adjustment. The work plan item could expand to consider the tree protection ordinance amendments related to costs of administration, and that would be a fiscal year '24, '25 work plan item. There's already a fiscal year '24, '25 tree protection ordinance amendment work item, but that was really to help bring cleanup items that are the product of lessons learned during a couple of years of implementation. But under this alternative, staff would expand its analysis of the tree protection ordinance to see if there are components that could be amended in a way that would reduce costs with that as an objective of those amendments. This alternative would allow additional time to increase efficiencies, complete the ongoing requests for proposals, or RFP, for long-term contract arborist services, and allow a collection of additional data on administration and incidences of noncompliance that might be related to the tree permit cost. This, in other words, would be a more holistic opportunity than taking a tree permit subsidy in isolation as a piecemeal component of the tree permit program overall. That concludes staff's presentation. We're happy to answer any questions or provide more detail, and again, recommend that the city council first consider those key policy questions before advancing to a consideration of tree subsidies. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Murdock. I'll entertain lights. Before I call on a fellow council member, I have a question that I want to get out of the way, because it's just a question I want to get out of the way. And that is, if you would please talk about dead trees for a moment, and the process for eliminating dead trees and the costs associated therefrom. Again, I just wanted to get that out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, council members, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. So related to dead trees, there is no fee that is charged by the city for a dead tree. If a resident has a dead tree, what they do is call the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department comes out and verifies the tree is dead, and they are given permission to remove it.
Thank you very much. Council members who have questions. Councilmember Bowles.
Certainly, just a process question. So for pruning, we're charging the same $1,000 fee currently as part of the fee schedule? Is that, is that correct?
So currently for, that's for anything over 15% of the tree. Then if it's, if you're pruning more than 15% of the tree, then you do have to get a permit, and you have to have an arborist review, you know, basically to make sure that you're pruning that tree appropriately. If you're pruning under 15%, you do not need a permit.
Okay, can you confirm that an arborist report is required? Because I was reading the tree ordinance, and I, it seemed to say it was up to the discretion of the director for both the arborist report and a tree plan, actually locating the tree on the property.
Yeah, I mean, we can take a look at it again. My understanding is that the track assessment is not required for it, but there is a report required from an arborist.
Okay. Let me, let me find it, and I can come back to that.
I have a follow-up question.
Please.
On the dead tree question, what if the city staff member goes out and goes, "Hmm, not quite dead"?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. So the way that it works is the, again, the way that the ordinance reads, it actually says dead or dying tree. So that gets into this concept of what's a dying tree. So basically, you know, city staff are not arborists, so they would go out there, they would look at it. If the tree looks like it's alive, maybe it's got, you know, beetles in it, something, at that point, it would be, it would be required to go through the process, because we're not going to be, we're not arborists, we're not experts, we can't say, yes, that tree's going to die. They could get an arborist out that says, oh, you just need to spray the tree or do something, and it's going to be perfectly healthy. So, you know, for tree, for the tree to get Public Works approval to, for, to be removed, it has to be clearly dying or dead.
Sorry, I just found that. So it's section 4-12.05, applications for tree pruning permits, and it says the applicant may be required to provide a plot plan or survey drawn to scale depicting the tree and any improvements on the property, and/or an arborist report. So it, so it doesn't sound like it's necessarily required. So, so what would the process be?
Ultimately, again, I would say that the city, you know, because it says and/or arborist report, but I think anything that's going to be over 15% at that point, we would be requiring an arborist to take a look at how that tree's going to be pruned. I mean, if they're going to be pruning 70, you know, 50% of the tree, right? I mean, we want to make sure that they're going to be pruning it in a manner that that tree's going to survive. So we would need to have more detail related to that.
And Councilmember Bowles, I do want to draw attention to the preceding section, 4-12.04, related to tree removal permits. It does provide an arborist report, including an ISA basic tree risk assessment form, will be required for a removal of a protected tree needing a permit.
Right. I understand that for removal. It just seems like that is a big burden for someone who's just pruning a little bit of the tree. Do others, and I, I didn't see any information, do other cities charge permit fees for pruning? Have we, do we have any data on that?
Maybe, okay, hold on.
Yeah, so other cities do charge those fees. They are lower than the removal generally, but there are fees for pruning as well. They're not the same equivalent as for removal, though.
And council may remember that during consideration of the ordinance, initially, I think the recommendation was 25% of the tree prior to needing to get a permit, but ultimately it was determined that the 15% was going to be put in place. I, I would just say again, if somebody's coming in and they're going to be pruning over 15% of the tree, that could be 50% of the tree, you know, could be 60% of the tree. So that's not something that internally, from a staff perspective, we're going to be comfortable saying, you know, yes, you're going, you can prune 60% of the tree and it's going to live. You know, that's just not our expertise.
And from the standpoint of the fee, you know, it's my opinion anyways, that once we have an arborist on the city's staff or consultant team reviewing an arborist report, it's not likely to have a major difference in terms of the time spent and thus the cost. And so if an arborist report's required, there's time needed to review it and to comment on it from the city's consulting arborist, which supports the fee related to the tree trimming permit. If an arborist report were not to be required, then presumably the cost could be reduced in some, in some degree.
And can you remind us, so the fee went into effect August 23rd? Is that, is that correct?
I think a little earlier.
It was August 12th, 10th.
Okay, so a month, that's, that's all. So when we say that we haven't gotten a lot of complaints about pruning or tree fees, I mean, we probably haven't really had that many applications under the new fee yet for...
A handful, the numbers in the staff report, I believe, since the fee took effect. It's not many, but annualized, it's about the level of activity we would expect on a monthly basis. So not more or not less, really, when you look at that trend line.
Councilmember Beer.
Oh, thank you. So we recently made a lot of changes to our tree ordinance, right? And so I think, and I appreciate the staff report a lot, because it helped me understand, but if you could just kind of go over what that has meant to specifically your department, Lisa, and all those changes, I think it's important for me to understand the additional work that has gone in and the additional work that needs to continue to go into what we have requested, right, and what we have made changes to. Because of the changes, I, we are, we are proud to make those changes, right? We, we need to support our urban forests, but we also need to understand what, what's going on with your departments.
Yes, thank you very much. And, and maybe Director Murdock can put back up the slide that shows the difference between, the difference between what the process was previously and, and what it is currently. And as Director, Director Murdock was discussing previously, I mean, initially, our initial process was basically you're just getting this tree removal application submitted, then somebody from the, you know, park superintendent typically was going to go out and take a look at it, and then ultimately, if it was approved, the tree was posted and then taken down. And so now, of course, we have this new process, which is much more intensive, and, you know, absolutely, you know, a lot of great things in the ordinance that the council put in place, you know, to help protect our trees, but it does require more work and more technical work. And I know part of that is also this number of trees now that are coming under the umbrella of the ordinance. As Director Murdock was showing, you know, previously, there was, you know, larger-sized trees that were coming under the ordinance. Now it's actually 12-inch, you know, anything 12 inches or greater, which is quite significant, even with talking with other arborists that I have come in, they've said, oh, we, you know, we haven't seen that other places. This is really, you know, a small diameter tree to come under your ordinance. And that is also causing a huge, you know, impact, because we're, we're going to be seeing also all of these smaller trees coming, coming forward, right? And because of this issue of, you know, the private trees, the city trees, the, you know, under the development and building permit, all of these trees needing to be assessed, there is an application process that now has to be put in place, it has to be standardized and go through one location, which is the planning department. So we need to have somebody who's now taking in all these applications. And just like anything else, like if you're, you know, submitting in a building permit, there's a checklist, because there's all sorts of things that have to go with that application. So somebody has to check all those things to make sure that those things are included. And then, after they figure out all those things are included, it has to go to the technical person who's going to be reviewing it. And just like anything that's submitted, you know, to the city, technical application, usually there's things that need to be corrected, right? So you're going to be calling up that person, saying, hey, you know, what's going on with this additionally? You know, they need to go out there and look at it in the field, they're going to have this back and forth, you know, going between the applicant and the technical folks, and then also trying to get that additional information that's coming in. And then finally, when there's a decision made, then of course, you know, city staff is jumping in, they're having to, you know, send out the letters, you know, post the tree, and then ultimately, as we know, this can get appealed, and then there's a whole nother long process related to that. So I hope that helps.
That helps. Thank you.
And Mayor, if you'd allow me to just follow on to that. So all of that process described by Director Peterson, someone needs to pay for it. And so is it the applicant, or is the city is really one of the policy questions for the council tonight? I think looking back to the old process under the heritage tree ordinance, it's easy to draw the wrong conclusions and lessons from that process. The parks superintendent was involved in that process, making, you know, field observations without the benefit of an arborist report in most cases. That parks superintendent for many years happened to be an arborist, but wasn't the city arborist. And so that's, I think, a misconception that some might have of observing that former process, that more was being done in that review than was actually occurring, and whether the people involved in that review were the right people to be making thoughtful, informed decisions on the tree removals, I think, remains to be seen in terms of that former process. And so this is a much more systematized, formalized process that has corresponding costs and requirements associated with it, and that's the point we're trying to relay to the council tonight.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
My question is for the mayor and the city attorney in terms of, I have two things I want to talk about, one of them, or ask about. One of them is a further explanation of the term "community benefit." And the second is a question about noncompliance, and the, and sort of, you know, the city's response if, say, someone doesn't want to pay a $1,000 fee and they just scheduled the tree cutting on Saturday morning and do it. So that gets into like lots of detail, but it makes me think it's a deliberation kind of question. But I, it is more information that I want to have staff expand on that is beyond what I read in the staff report and even in the questions. I, I need more information. I need more information even from the question and answer part.
Sure.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that's really, you know, necessarily a legal question in terms of what we do, you know, with any code enforcement matter, which is what that would become. So I think staff can answer that question. I don't know the details about what our, you know, actual procedural process would be from staff's perspective, and I think staff could answer that. I'm not sure I understand the question about what do you mean by community benefit? In what context?
It's been asserted by members in the community that there's a benefit, that cities subsidize things, various things, under the umbrella and under the explanation of it's providing a community benefit. And that's the rationale for why cities subsidize things. And I wanted to explore that more and have a better understanding of what goes in the bucket of community benefit. Can you give me some other examples?
Well, I don't think there is a bucket for community. I think that term is whatever the person who used it intended it to mean.
Okay, that was a clarifying question, then. Does it mean anything in terms of the planning world? And if so, what?
So I don't think there's a formal community benefit discussion to be had on this topic. I've heard a similar claim be made in this context related to trees and the urban forest. And what I think they're trying to say is that not only are there private benefits and costs associated with having a prominent tree on one's property, there are broader public benefits or detriments if a tree is unsafe, right? You know, benefits including, you know, aesthetic benefits, environmental benefits, and so forth. All of that is probably true, but I think the council needs to frame it in the proper context. And it's important for, you know, the community broadly, for properties to be upkept and for homes to be aesthetically pleasing and to be painted every so often, and rotten siding or degraded roofs to be replaced. And we put that burden on the property owner who gets the benefit of the upkept property, and the rest of the community gets incidental benefit from that. But we don't subsidize the tree permit or the roof permit, for example, or the siding or the window replacement permit. Similarly, there's a great public benefit to well-kept and maintained sidewalks, but the private property owner bears the cost and responsibility to get the permits to replace the sidewalk, to maintain it, you know, without cracks and without trip hazards. That's a burden on the private property ownership. And so I think if you conceptualize it in that same context, proper maintenance and eventual removal of aged trees or unsafe trees is a burden on private property ownership. Sure, there are some incidental public benefits, but it's not been the city's past practice to subsidize those types of permit applications that are really core obligations of a property owner related to maintenance of their property.
And to the extent that you're asking the question, what do most cities use subsidization for? It varies. It's just a term of art for a council dipping into their general fund to pay for costs that are not being paid for by the actual user of the benefit. So the council has a lot of policy decisions, you know, sometimes it's because of affordability in terms of low income. They want to subsidize low-income, you know, people or other, you know, it can be whatever the council chooses it to be. There's no legal term "community benefit." It is what, you know, it's a term that the council can use in their police powers, which has a lot of discretion in terms of determining whether or not this tree permit fee should be subsidized based on the benefit that it provides for staff, the benefit that it provides for the community, the benefit that the council thinks it may provide in general for any reason that could impact the city. It's, does the council feel that there is a justifiable reason for subsidizing this particular fee?
Yeah, and if I can just add, so if, an example of that would be the fees that we passed this year for our seniors, that it's $30 per year for a senior to sign up to be able to have a membership in the Seniors in Action and participate in classes. That's a highly subsidized rate. The cost to provide all of the classes and all of those things is much, much more expensive to the city. So there was a decision made at some point that said, this has, you know, a public benefit, and this is something we're willing to subsidize. And so that's just sort of an example.
Thank you.
Did you get your question answered around noncompliance?
No, not yet. But I don't know if, I think part, I think part of my question was, should we talk about that now, or do we have to wait for a public comment period to bring that into the conversation? Because I, I'm, my understanding is that there's, you know, hefty fine associated with not following procedure, but it also has been asserted that, yeah, but we never enforce that. And so, you know, it's hard to make a policy decision when you have these various inputs. And that's why I wanted to hear from staff, you know, what is the protocol, the plan? I mean, I know we're short staff, there's always that. So those are the thoughts I had.
No, that's an excellent question, and I think staff should answer that now before we get to public comment. That's a, that's clarity from the staff.
And that's why I asked you. Thank you.
So Councilmember Beckmeyer, it is true that the tree protection ordinance includes a variety of tools for the city to take enforcement action when it's warranted. I think it's disingenuous to talk about an ordinance that's been in effect for, you know, less than a year and describe the failure of the city to act in any sort of meaningful way related to noncompliance. I think the first reason is these complex code enforcement matters, if and when significant action is needed, take a long time to develop and require significant city staff resources. The second is that we just get very few complaints about unpermitted tree removal. The best numbers I can get, they're not completely comprehensive, but consulting with our code enforcement team is around 1% or less than 1% of the overall complaints that we get typically. And so in context, it's a relatively low level of reported violations that prompt investigations, which thus have a correspondingly low number of significant cases that then, you know, warrant significant penalties and interventions. And so it's a small numbers issue here that we're talking about. It's not a widespread issue. And we received and investigated over 500 code enforcement complaints last year, so the community knows how to file complaints related to perceived violations. I don't think it's true that people don't know that you can report a major tree being removed without a permit. I think it's the case that most people follow the law, and very few unpermitted tree removals are occurring, at least based on the data that the city team has. I'll end that point by saying, we are currently investigating one case now that very likely has the potential to manifest into significant penalties being assessed. But we're very early in that process to advance all of the documentation that's required, and we have to work in lockstep with the city attorney's office on those types of enforcement cases.
Can I, can I just follow up on the one that you're investigating now? Were the offenders aware of the tree ordinance? Or was that work done in ignorance, let's say? Or do we know?
I think at this point, we don't know all the details. We're still digging into the details.
Okay. And I know I asked this in my written questions, but maybe you can answer for the public. So since the tree ordinance was put in place in October of 2022, what outreach and education has been done to the community to educate them about the new ordinance?
Yes, thank you for that. And I think as we, as we mentioned in the response to the question, there was a huge outreach that happened while we were putting the ordinance together. So we had, you know, committee, commission, joint meeting on that, we had several council meetings on that, we had public outreach, we had specialized webpage, you know, we had polling that was done with public. And, you know, then ultimately, the ordinance got put in place. Now, when we changed the fee to $1,000, there was information that went out on Connect with Pacifica that talked about the ordinance also in detail and also talked about the change in the fee. And that was at the end of June, I believe that was in.
Okay. And how many people are subscribed to Connect with Pacifica? Elliot?
I believe it's a little bit over 3,500, right?
Okay. So anyway, just, it just concerns me that we, we may be missing a good section of the population that doesn't, doesn't know yet, right?
Well, I think perhaps related to the increased fee, but I'm not sure that's the case with respect to major trees being protected in the city of Pacifica. That has been a city ordinance for multiple decades. And so while some of the finer points about tree sizes have changed, I think broadly speaking, it's understood in the community that prominent trees do require some sort of city review prior to their, to their removal.
Right. Okay. But the definition of prominent trees has really increased dramatically, though, right?
Right. Of the maybe, I think, half a dozen that we've had in the last year related to complaints of unpermitted tree removal, I cannot tell you how many would have been trees that were not previously protected but are now. So that's a follow-up point that we can, we can come back with.
Mayor Protem.
The process, I can see where it costs way more because it's a much broader process. Do you think that that process could be streamlined at all to lower the fees? I know that's a further discussion, and we'd have to put that out, but would that help?
Well, I think ultimately, yes. I mean, the, from the standpoint of the fact it was very simple previously to, it's much more complicated now. Although ultimately, I think there's a lot of things in the ordinance that, you know, was appealing to the community and to the council, which is why it was put in place. You know, so it, there may be some tough decisions to try to scale it back because at this point, you know, I think the oversight is happening that the council was hoping would happen at that point. But that's not to say that we couldn't look at it and see if there were some ways we could do that.
Thank you.
And one more. And again, this was a question that I asked, but the staff report indicated that the city is looking to hire a city arborist and putting out an RFP now. And so can you just confirm what that person's role would be and if that's a potential cost savings over, you know, an hourly consultant rate?
So ultimately, this is not, you know, we're not hiring an arborist from this. We're looking for a consultant that's going to be taking over from this temporary consultant who's been on board. So basically, when the ordinance got going, we started getting these applications, we said, wow, this is a lot of work, we need some help. So we went out there, we got a temporary arborist in place and a company to temporarily help us while we could put together a request for proposals that we felt would ultimately get the most, you know, kind of streamlined process in place for a consultant arborist to help us. And that's what's out there right now. So we'll be getting those proposals in and we'll be reviewing those.
And that would just be an hourly rate, or is it a certain amount of time that's kind of promised per year?
Typically, that's going to be an hourly rate.
If we were to hire an arborist, how much would that be?
Well, we haven't done a comprehensive salary and benefits assessment, but preliminary research suggests somewhere between $200,000 to $250,000 per year, based on the level of tree permit activity we have, that would, in isolation, significantly increase the cost of the tree permits to achieve cost recovery. There is a small amount of additional other work that that staff member could do that might bring the cost down slightly. But in every scenario that we've considered, the cost recovery component of the tree permit would probably double at least compared to the current contract arborist arrangement.
And I just want to add that Director Murdock mentioned only annual cost, full burden annual cost, so you need to count the ongoing liability for pension or web and the long-term benefits to this as well.
And the arborist component of the fee is a relatively minor share as the fee is structured. The administrative component, if you recall, is actually more significant, and that arborist, I guess while it's possible, you know, may not necessarily perform some of those administrative tasks. So it's not clear that, you know, the entirety of that tree permit fee would, would be addressed by that staff, that staff hiring.
I think it's also important to note that most of the cities that, that we did speak to that have an in-house arborist on their staff, they also do contracting out for arborists for special things, going on people's property, tree protection plans in some cases, when you're doing construction, things like that. So it wasn't just the salary of, of the in-house, it wasn't like that solved it. They actually had contracted arborist stuff on top of that as well.
If we had a member of our staff who was trained to be an arborist, though those weren't the primary duties, might that save us money overall on the fee process? And then the follow-up question to that, if yes, is there a way to necessitate that a staff member get that upgrade to?
So I'm not sure it would change the cost situation, in my opinion, and I, my colleagues may have their own opinions. The fee is currently structured on the city staff hourly rate. So whether it's city staff or the contractor who's in many cases charging more than the city staff rate, it's not likely that bringing that in-house would reduce the costs, in my opinion. Not only that, you know, Public Works Director Peterson can talk about how taxed her staff already is. So it's not clear where that internal staff capacity would come from, even if the requisite qualifications would be obtained.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Public comment?
Okay, then we're going to public comment. I have two cards, one from Paul Toda and then one from Chris Redfield. If anyone would like to make a comment, by all means, valid a yellow card in the back, staff will bring it up. You're also welcome to dial in or raise your hand on Zoom. Paul Toda, please come up for public comment.
I'm Paul Toda, speaking on behalf of myself and other members of Tree City Pacifica, who oppose the $1,000 permit fee for pruning and removing trees. At the same time, we do thank the city council and city staff for all the hard work you are doing on behalf of everyone. We make these suggestions in the spirit of cooperation and collegiship. First, we believe, we believe the cost is exorbitant compared to other cities. For both pruning and removal, South City charges $112, San Mateo $100, Burlingame $150, while San Bruno charges 70 for pruning and 105 for removal. Neither Redwood City nor Millbrae charge any fees at all. Regarding the philosophy of cost recovery, we agree with other municipalities that if one or two individuals benefit from a city service, then cost recovery makes sense. However, if a community as a whole benefits, then fees should be subsidized. We do believe the urban canopy, the urban forest, is a community benefit. We also believe that this is an undue burden on citizens and will encourage illegal tree removal, which can be dangerous. Also, when people refrain from applying for tree permits, neighbors have no way to appeal the removal of a tree, and those who violate the ordinance may not follow the two-for-one planting provision. In addition, we've been contacted about, about illegal tree removals occurring in Pacifican neighborhoods. Citizens may be uncomfortable reporting on their neighbors, making it hard for the city to know when violations occur. Finally, we believe there are more efficient and thus more cost-effective ways to get the job done. Currently, the city pays for several contractors. However, in the past, the city has supported the urban forest by employing a city arborist and by reasonable permit fees. Most cities recognize the urban forest as a community benefit because it combats climate change, improves our health and property values. We are pleased to see in the staff report that an RFP is out for an arborist. We lobbied for the passage of Measure Y to help the city afford to hire an arborist who can handle all tree-related tasks. If permit, in short, permit fee structuring should make it easy for citizens to do the right thing, we urge you to help Pacificans by lowering the tree permit fee to $150 and down the road include the hiring of an arborist in the city budget. Thank you for your time and once again, for all you do.
Thank you very much. Chris Redfield, that's the last card I have.
Good evening, staff and council. Chris Redfield. Trees are something we all love, right up to the point where we hate them. We love them when their colors change, we love their shade. What kid doesn't love to climb one? love their shade. What kid doesn't love to climb one? We hate them when their roots heave driveways, sidewalks, and streets. We hate them when they intrude and break our utilities. We hate them when costs of maintenance or removal are realized. The revised ordinance addresses issues and concerns, but adds complexity and layers which add to administrative costs. That results in a natural progression of cost. Staffs identified anticipated time for inspection, review, and issuance of permits. Those additions to the new revised TPO have resulted in a fiscal challenge. Subsidy or substantial reduction in the permit fee is not prudent. I support implementing and retaining the full fee for removal and a reduced-rate subsidy for substantial pruning and trimming. This pragmatic approach allows for the spirit of the preservation and can enhance the vision of the desired urban canopy without undue financial burden to the general fund and property owner. Full subsidies or further revision of the TPO will put Pacifica further out on a fiscal limb. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have two hands raised. Our first hand is from Cliff Lawrence.
Thank you for that. Cliff, please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Cliff, you've been unmuted. Mayor, if you'd like, I can go to our next caller.
Give him just another moment. Cliff, are you able to? I don't know if you need to do anything on your end to unmute. Okay, we'll come back to you. Elizabeth, who's next?
Our next stand is from Cindy Abbott.
Cindy, please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute.
Hello, this is Cindy Abbott, West Charlotte Park. I really want to thank you for bringing forward this issue tonight about how the fee increased over 300%. And I hope that tonight you'll direct staff to return the fee to the $200 to $275 range that it's been for many years, and that's more in line with other cities, as we saw in that chart earlier tonight. A new and more overly complicated process has been put into place recently. And it's a real concern to me to hear this conversation about this increase being properly framed as a discussion of providing a subsidy to property owners. And yet, we heard about a city subsidized program where grants are providing replacement lateral pipes, a significant environmental and infrastructure concern. But city staff is missing the critical point. Trees are an asset to our community, and their review and protection should not be subject to a full cost recovery or negatively coined as a subsidy. This ties into two city council goals, improving stewardship of city infrastructure and pursuing climate change adaptation and mitigation. Trees are a critical part of both of those goals. And placing this increase on updated heritage ordinance is a concern of me too, because most of these actions that has been described to you as the process, and I know this from personal experience, have been part of the process for over a decade that I've served this city. It's been a lot more compacted, not across multiple departments and with outside contractors unless they were needed. So I hope that you will return the fee to a more reasonable level, have city staff provide an analysis of options of either an in-house with additional responsibilities or a part... Okay, thank you.
Sorry, you had one minute left.
Oh, okay, thanks. And provide a more thorough analysis of those responsibilities. Maybe it's a part-time position, or maybe it is as it was for many, many years. You're very effectively in the city, part of our wonderful Public Works field service team who had the arborist responsibilities as well. So what are the differences, though? Because right now, we're spending a lot of money on contract positions and a lot of staff time passing all of this back and forth when before it had a more compact stream of actions. So please return the fee, review the process, it's way too intensive, and educate the public on how to maintain and preserve our trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we can try again with Cliff Lawrence?
Cliff, if you're able to unmute there, go ahead and do so. State your name for the record, and I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
There's no unmuting happening on Cliff's side, Mayor. Would you like me to proceed? There's no other hands raised at this time?
Cliff, please press the unmute button on your side. Seems like his system was working well earlier tonight, so I'm concerned.
It's possible he stepped away. I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, Cliff, if you can hear us, please email us your comments. And if no one else has any public comment to make, then I will close public comment. Oh, I see a card coming up. Come on up, Kim.
Good evening, council, staff. Kimberly Finale, a thought occurred to me. I'd like to just stand up and advocate for senior citizens and those who perhaps are on a lower income level. And if a subsidy was going to be considered, you know, staff time is certainly understandable, and they, you know, there are people who can afford to help to recover that staff time and the costs associated with it. There are also people who cannot, and that could be a severe hardship for some of those folks. So perhaps since you are revisiting this topic and the topic of a subsidy, you might consider some sort of a sliding scale for those who absolutely could not find $1,000 to pay a fee in addition to the cost with a tree that is being removed, probably, you know, more than likely for a good reason. Most people don't want to get rid of trees just because. So thank you. Hope you have a nice evening.
Thank you, Kim. Do we want to try Cliff Lawrence one more time? Is his hand still raised?
His hand is no longer raised.
Okay. In that case, we will close public comment at this time and bring it back to council. I just want to start off with a question, and I think that you touched on it earlier, probably Director Palacio. Other cities' review processes compared to us, did it seem like of the cities you surveyed for cost recovery, were their review processes as robust? And if not, even though we've discussed it already a couple of times, maybe you could give us a sense of where our process is or is not as robust as other cities?
Yeah, I think that the feedback that I got and the research that I did showed that we are in the same sort of area as others, that they're very similar processes. Ours might have a few more things that they want to look at, like, for instance, I'll give you the, if there's a tree within 50 feet of a project that's happening, you know, the arborist has to review that tree. Maybe that isn't happening in another city, but they have another requirement. So I think the processes are similar. Ours might be a little bit more involved than some and maybe a little less than others. I think it's important to note that, you know, when you have like a city like San Mateo where they say it's a $100 fee, but then on top of that, if you do three trees, that's $300. And then they're also going to hit you with refundable fees that are between $483 and $740 per tree. And then at that point, if you don't want to plant equivalent trees, they're just going to keep that.
When you say equivalent tree, are you talking about a full-size tree?
Correct. So if you take something out like that, you know, that's a substantial tree, they're going to make you put in a substantial tree somewhere else on the property. And if you're not able to, then they're going to keep that refundable fee that you submitted. When you look at the county of San Mateo, they do 616 per tree. So if you do multiple trees, you're already over what we charge. Then they also have sort of a hidden airline fee of $451 for planning to even process that application. So there's different involvements. What they, what each city requires seems to be a little bit different, but we're sort of in the ballpark. But it's an expensive process.
How many trees are covered under one permit in Pacifica?
Unlimited.
It's an interesting difference between us and other places.
I did not encounter another one that was not per tree. Thank you.
I did look at Burlingame, and it was 150 for any number of trees. And can you just clarify? So, I mean, we have a policy of two or three-to-one replacement trees, too, right? And I assume, you know, part of this $1,000 fee is someone following up to make sure that those were planted. And I actually like the idea of having this deposit instead because then that puts the onus on the applicant. And, you know, if they don't replant it or don't come back and reclaim it, then the city can keep the money. I'm just wondering if there's possibly some changes to our fee structure and like maybe charging for more trees, you know, if they're more in an application.
Yeah, thank you for that. So it is a two-to-one replacement, but it's important that we are only requiring a 15-gallon tree replacement. That's not the same as what I'm, you know, hearing Bob say that these other cities are doing. They're requiring a substantial tree to be similar to the tree that's being removed or up to some limit that they have put in place. You know, so I think, you know, they're probably collecting a lot of their fees because people are not able to do that component. Whereas ours is 15-gallon, that's, I think, a pretty easy one to get in place.
But I don't think it's fair for us to be comparing to that $7,000 tree replacement if that's not, you know, in our ordinance. I mean, I looked at Menlo Park because I do a lot of work in Menlo Park, and I actually called their city arborist and spoke to them. And so, I mean, their basic permit fees are $210 for up to three trees, and then four plus, it's a lower rate per tree, so $180 per tree, you know, knowing there's some... But obviously, it adds up. If you have 20, you're paying more.
Yeah, the city, Menlo Park actually requires you to state whether or not you're paying an in-loof fee. So if you're going to pay an upfront dollar amount, and if you intend to put the trees in, you'll get that back. But many people would just say, well, we're not going to put the trees in, and then they would pay that. And that could go up to $7,000 per tree.
And then the city has that money and they can plant nice trees elsewhere, right?
Correct.
So that's a good policy. And I actually looked at Menlo Park's staff rates, and the highest yearly salary for a city arborist was $126,000. And that doesn't include the benefits and so forth, which, you know, obviously add to that. But I think they're a city that does trees well, just in my professional experience. So it was interesting to talk to them. Can you, I didn't really understand your option two. Mr. Murdock, maybe you can explain that a little bit, the phase in. Oh, sorry, no. The option one, when you were saying that the city staff costs are $187.50, and that might be something that we, you know, could consider not charging, that's $187.50 out of the thousand. So is that right? So we would, in that scenario, we would still be charging $812.50?
Correct.
Okay. And that's primarily because we are using a lot of outside consultants even for the basic processing, right, which we used to do internally, is what I'm hearing from other people.
Well, yes, to the first part, and I'm not sure to the second part. So yes, we are utilizing consultants for as much of this process as we can. It's an intensive process, and our staff is already significantly committed to other routine day-to-day work in the planning department. For example, the significant building permit processing load and discretionary permit processing that the permit technicians that handle this inbound and outbound traffic are responsible for. The particular attention that's needed to tree permit processing really needs a specific focus, which is why we have the consultants overtaking most of the administrative processing. The city staff component, that $187.50, is a small amount of initial intake and final communication to applicants. But most, everything in the middle is done by the CSG consultant for the administrative processing and the consultant arborist for the technical review component.
But this used to all be done by Public Works and Planning. Wasn't really involved, or?
So I think that's not the correct characterization. So as we've tried to explain, very little process was occurring. The planning department initially was a conduit. We have a counter that's open to the public. We would essentially take the applications and route them right away to the Public Works Department. Then that minimal process where the superintendent would go up, take a look at the tree, mm, yeah, sure, remove it. Yes, that was the substantive review, if you will. And then there was the noticing and final permit issuance. So very little administrative process, very little substantive review, almost no back and forth, which also eats up a lot of that administrative time. So the processes are completely different. Apples and oranges in staff's assessment.
Any other questions? I have a question. And I apologize to city clerk that the arm of my chair keeps pressing that button. I just wanted to acknowledge that. It'll probably happen again. I'll warn you right now. For some reason, I decide the height of my chair should be right in alignment with my voting button on it. Okay, digression over. So one of our community members made what I thought was a very nice point about the approach of a sliding scale for those who really do have difficulty paying that kind of a fee. One could imagine somebody who's lived here for the last 50 years of their life, who might be now on a fixed income, and they need to remove a tree. Is there a way to slide the scale? Is that, well, that's the question.
I can start by saying we haven't evaluated that as an alternative. I would have to defer to Assistant City Manager Carter for other financial hardship processes the city might have. I'm only familiar where they've come up in contexts of inability to pay penalties, for example, related to a coenforcement matter. It's a fair amount of documentation related to income and personal details that are needed. Not everyone, even if they would qualify, would be willing to go through that process. It can be a little bit invasive, in my opinion. With that aside, and allowing in a moment Assistant City Manager Carter to weigh in, that would be another administratively-heavy process to add on to this already heavy process. So there would be costs to the city to administer that sliding scale. And I don't know, based on past permit applicants, how many might be senior citizens, how many might be low-income. And so there could be a different fiscal impact that we haven't evaluated.
And Assistant City Manager Carter, if I may. So I think one thing that I'd like to say is, we use the term "need." Remember, if a tree is dead, there is no fee. Most of the applications that are submitted are not based on need, it's want, right? It's somebody wants to take out a tree. And so that's very different than a need, like the tree is dead and it's going to fall, and it's going to hurt someone or whatever. And that's a different thing than, you know, need and want are two different things. I think that's just an important point.
But there are sometimes needs when someone's, you know, the tree has grown and is undermining their foundations or is in a fire area, and it's now too close to their house, and, you know...
There are occasions for that. It's not a one-size-fits-all, but for sure, you know, on many occasions, it's because someone is doing some sort of construction or something to their home, and, you know, they want to take that tree out for that reason. Because we're talking about healthy trees and heritage trees generally.
Well, I just want to add that we currently don't have a policy for any sliding scale, and we don't have much of the information yet, but if the council wants to provide us with traction to explore and research more what this sliding scale may look like, we are happy to take this direction and bring something back to you.
Thank you very much.
So I think there's one thing that I'm battling with, because we carefully put into place all of these new things into our ordinance because we wanted to protect and increase our urban forest and our tree canopy, right? And so by doing that, there's now more work to do, more assessments to happen. And so I think even from the beginning, I was confused when folks were not happy with the fee, because in my mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that that's protecting trees. And so I really was confused from the get-go, and that's why I really wanted it to come back to council, so that we could hear all the information about, you know, what's going into it, how are the trees being protected, because they're being protected through all of the parts of the ordinance that we put together. And so I don't know if maybe I, I feel like I'm still confused about that part, and I know we've heard from Tree City Pacifica several different times, and I completely understand what they're saying. I just don't understand how the fee is going to cause more trees to be cut down. I thought it would be the opposite.
Well, it may cause more trees to be cut illegally. I mean, just look at the cost. I mean, you know, someone first has to get an arborist report, which is, you know...
Which we made.
Which, yeah. And again, maybe that's not needed for pruning, and I feel like the pruning conversation I want to have separately, but, you know, that's $1,000. We got an email from someone who paid $2,500 for a tree that was, you know, far away from her project that wasn't really affecting it.
For an arborist report.
But so that's, so that's a huge expense to start with, and then the $1,000 fee, you know, on top of that, and then if you're doing plans, too. So, I mean, even at the smallest amount, you're talking $2,500 to take out a tree. So if you're, you know, if you, I don't know, if you need to for fire safety, or, you know, are you, I mean, I would think twice before I started to take something out, when sometimes it's, it can be important to the community to take it out. So anyway, I think that's the concern from Tree City Pacifica, that we're making it so expensive and onerous that people aren't going to get permits. And we don't really know yet, right, because it's only been enacted for a month.
Well, and that's how I feel. I feel like we don't know yet. We don't have the data that, we have the data about what has to happen, but we don't have the data about what is happening.
Right.
And so to me, I'm not ready to make a decision because of that piece right there. And maybe that's what I'm missing.
Right.
To understand, right? Because like, and I know we've talked a lot about the education, about the ordinance and about the fees. Well, then, you know, we can get out there and start educating our community. You know, all of us can do that, and we can encourage others to do that, too. So, yeah, maybe that's why I'm so hesitant, because I don't have the data that I'm, that I need to make the decision.
And if I could just jump in, too, just to give some information related to what I heard from the community during the storm season. So as you know, after the storm, storms came in with the high winds. Frankly, everybody and their brother wanted their tree down, right? They all were like, we need to take our tree down. We've got to take the tree down. This tree's going to fall, my house is going to kill me, you know? And so, you know, having the process in place that we currently have, I was able to explain to a number of residents, well, this is the process now, so you really need to make sure that tree is dangerous, right? Because you're going to have to pay this fee, you're going to have to go out and get an arborist, you know, that arborist is going to have to agree with you. There's a long process, somebody could appeal that if, you know, they don't agree with you. And so sort of all this angst that was going on went into, okay, I need to think about this, right? You know, I don't, maybe I have to cut my tree down this second. I'm going to have to go look into this, talk to an arborist, see if this is really, you know, something that's viable. So from my perspective, what I saw the ordinance doing, and at that point, when people were so freaked out about the tree, they weren't going to, they were going to pay, you know, $2,000, $10,000 to get that tree down, right? I mean, they didn't care about the cost. They were so afraid. But what really helped them to sit there and think about it a little bit was the process that we have in place, that they have to get an arborist, they're going to have to get this arborist to agree with them. You know, there's this, you know, also process that somebody could appeal it, and it got them to, I think, calm down and start thinking about it, looking into it more, and, you know, many of those people did not come in to get a tree removal permit. So I just think, just from my perspective on what I saw, I think the process is helping people kind of rethink, think about it, actually talk to an expert about it, maybe get a little bit more comfort on what's happening with their tree, maybe I don't need to take this tree down. And the other thing, just to keep in mind, too, related to removal, I mean, right now we're talking about this one situation we have right now. We're talking about thousands of dollars that could likely be paid because of damage to trees. So I think that $1,000 is minimal compared to what our ordinance is providing, which could be thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars, for somebody to illegally take out a tree. There's no comparison.
I just wanted to read something from the tree ordinance as we talk about community benefit. This is in the "whereas's" at the beginning. And to the point where I think it's not the same as someone's roof or a permit, or, you know, for a home improvement. Whereas the maintenance and preservation of trees will contribute to a reduction of air pollution, provide shade, and reduce the effects of urban heat islands, reduce stormwater runoff, and improve infiltration into the ground, thereby protecting against potential damages from soil erosion, mudslides, and flooding, as well as reducing the cost of handling stormwater by artificial means and other benefits for the city. Yeah, I think the community benefits are...
But how is this not doing that? So that's where I, that's where the block is for me, because I think that we are doing exactly that. That's what we've set out to do, is to increase the canopy, to protect the trees. And so I'm still, there's still a disconnect there for me. Anyone else?
And if we imposed all these requirements, then someone has to pay for them. I don't think the city should have to pay for these requirements that we've imposed on people to have their trees cut down. I just don't. And like this whole process is about live trees, not dead trees, not emergency, they're going to fall on my house, none of that. These are choosing to remove a tree. So that always has to keep coming back into my mind, that this is a choice. So.
Well, I just want to jump in to say, to the point that we don't have enough data yet, so the ordinance is very young, the fee is very young as well, so we can certainly, if the council is not ready to make a decision, we can certainly bring this back, evaluate, and, well, if you want to provide specific points that we should be evaluating the current course against, we can certainly do that and bring it back to you either during the strategic planning discussion or in a year, so you will have clean data for the whole year to see where we are.
Right, and as noted in the staff report, there's already intention fiscal year '24, '25 to return to council with proposed ordinance updates, initially conceived as cleanup, right, to iron out the wrinkles, if you will, of a new ordinance. But we've mentioned we have the opportunity to expand that, provide a bit more of a holistic view of the overall program, and figure out if there are revisions to the ordinance beyond cleanup that makes sense to better incentivize the right type of behavior and potentially to reduce costs associated with administration of the ordinance. And I agree completely, we don't have enough data either way to suggest the fee is a barrier to compliance. We also don't know if it's inhibiting people from undertaking appropriate tree removals at this point. That more holistic assessment in a year, you know, to 18 months from now with more data, I think will be instructive, and the council can, you know, consider appropriate policy steps at that time as well.
So I have been trying to allow my fellow council members to speak before me and just take a stab at adopting that practice more ardently while I'm here. Would you like to speak before I take a stab at it, or?
Well, I can do that, Mayor. I can see that you're urgently asking me to speak, so I will speak.
For once, I'm trying not to speak out of turn.
This has been a very challenging issue all the way around. We are an underfunded city, we have a very thin-stretched staff, and we put a lot of work on them by maximizing our tree ordinance. And I say maximizing because it's a lot bigger and more complex than it ever was before. So what I'm hearing in the community is, yeah, but we liked it the way it was before because it was nice and cheap. It was very reasonable, we could, people could afford it. But we want all this, but we want it for this price. And so that thing you're talking about, about cost recovery, I don't want to hear that because that, no, no, that implies I have to pay or people have to pay, and the city should have to pay. And I'm struggling with that because, you know, the city doesn't have funds to pay. That's the simple truth. I do question if our process is as streamlined as it can be. It is very young, it is very new, but I think it is very complicated. I would want us to be looking to streamline as much as we can, and I hear this not just about trees, I hear this about other processes. So something that I think would cost a good ton of money, but I would love to do, is do a holistic overlook, overview of our processes for efficiency's sake. Because I think it's not like, oh, you staff, you're just making work for yourselves. Do you think they want to make work for themselves? Of course they do not. But there's compliance, there's, we don't have a policy for that, there's, we just started it, I mean, it's complicated. And so what I heard tonight that I do like the idea of, and I'm curious about, I understand the need versus want thing, I do get that, but I am also sensitive to the idea that this could be pricing some people out of the ability to do it. And I'm thinking, well, they can't afford the $1,000 fee. Can they afford the tree cutter that needs to cut and come and cut this tree? Let me tell you, there was a tree removed from my back fence over the weekend. There were like five guys there with 49,000 chainsaws, and so it took two days. That was not cheap. And so the $1,000 fee that it may or may not have cost to get that tree removed was probably a drop in the bucket compared to what the actual cost of doing it was. So there's that piece. This whole thing is really frustrating to me because we're trying to do a good thing, in my view, good, I mean, that's a judgment call. Some, there have been some in the community that were very unhappy with our extending our tree ordinance. They felt that we are being very naive and unrealistic, and that trees, like all things, have a life cycle, and that eventually they're going to die anyway, and all the carbon that they've sequestered is going to be back in the cycle at that point. So, you know, I'm learning about all of this as I'm being required by virtue of this position to make a decision, and I am really leaning toward Mary Beer's, Councilmember Beer's point of view about more data needed. And I don't like saying that because I feel like this has come forward, people expect us to make a decision and make it better. And just make it go on the same way that it is for a longer period of time doesn't feel satisfactory to many in the community. This is a big deal, this is a big one. And, and let us remember, it applies to the city itself as well. That's been a big piece for me that I'm wondering about, because there are some city trees that, to my way of looking at it, those need to go. How's that going to work? And how does that work in light of this idea of having a city arborist? What else can the city arborist or the contractor that serves as the city arborist do, not just for the city's trees, but for the citizens in terms of service? Because this idea that, well, you got to get your own arborist, you got to do all this, you, 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 and we just, we'll check the boxes, doesn't feel right either. So that's a subsidy, having an arborist that knows this city, that knows what trees are where, what the history is. I mean, if they just got hired, they're going to have to learn, but it's knowable. There are many people on our staff that know these things and can tell and impart that institutional knowledge. So I'm thinking that that is an area that I think we really need to think much more deeply about, and I know that's not the right time of year for that. I get that. Mid-year budget cycle's the earliest that we talk about something like that, and I do appreciate that. And it may well be that goal-setting is the time that we really, really talk about this. So that's what I have to say. Are you happy?
I always am when you speak.
Can I piggyback before you go, Mayor? Through the mayor.
I see your light, and I call upon you.
I just wanted to also talk about the city arborist, yeah, because I think that's something that I would be interested in talking about, and we didn't do a salary, what did you call it, Christian? Salary?
Salary and benefits analysis.
Analysis, right, right. And I know how much benefits cost, so, but yeah, I think that it would be such a great thing, so I would be interested in talking about that.
I just want to say one more thing. You got me started. I did. It's not the back of an envelope, because I don't have an envelope. It's the back of a half a piece of paper analysis, so it's very, very technical, as you can see. But based on the information that was given to us in the staff report and looking at the cost of what we've spent so far on one part of our consultants, I calculated $288,000 is going to be the cost for the part that's, that came in at around $24,000 so far. And what I heard staff say is a full-time person with benefits is 250, 200 to 250,000. I mean, we're talking a person who's got significant credentials. This isn't like, I like trees, I'm now an arborist. They've got to go to lots of school and maintain that professional level of training. So we're looking to hire expertise, and that costs money. So for my way of thinking, the way, my big back-of-the-envelope, so to say, calculation, it looks kind of the same to me. What I think we gain, and hopefully it's not, hopefully it's a little less to bring someone on, is we build that knowledge of our city and that commitment and that camaraderie with our staff in a way that I think is harder to do, not impossible, but harder to do with consulting arrangements. Okay, now I'm done.
I'm relatively content not speaking on this one personally. No, I think everyone has brought up most of the thoughts that I've had over the course of the evening one way or the other. It sounds very much like consensus is leaning away from reducing the permit fee at this time. I think that we absolutely need to give the ordinance that we just put in place the time to show us what it is and what it does. And I think that while government process in general is not a satisfying spectator sport, aside from, you know, when there's some argument about something and voices get raised and how's it going to go. In general, good governance means we put a policy into place. We see what happens over a long enough period of time. We reevaluate and we amend in accordance with what our observations are. And I think that second-guessing in ordinance we just put into place without having the time to see what the reality behind it is, I think it's a mistake if we believe in the ordinance that we unanimously passed. And so I can't tell you right now that I think that the fee amount is the right fee amount. What I can tell you right now is I think I want to see what the results of the ordinance we put through is so that I have enough data to tell you whether or not I think it's the right fee amount. So I'd be a lot more comfortable when we have a track record to be able to deliberate more than that. I think that we have on our agenda amending the ordinance as we have a better understanding of what it's doing, how it's working. And I think that when we look at how we might want to amend this ordinance to make it more user-friendly for our community, that might be a better time to look at how we might adjust fees in accordance with how we're adjusting the ordinance altogether. We received one email that seemed tangential to what we were talking about from a lady who's putting a back porch on her second story. It's already existing. And because there's a tree existent within a fifty-foot radius, there needs to be that more robust process. And as a layperson, that doesn't feel right to me. And so that's the kind of thing that I'm looking forward to our report down the road, giving us some insight into, well, if we tweak it this way when it's a second-story thing that's already existent with trees that are perfectly healthy and seems from a lay perspective, there's no real cause-effect relationship off the ground, maybe that's a thing we change. So maybe when we have that discussion, it makes sense to see what fees need to be rearranged, especially in light of figuring out who the best person to contract with will be, which may not be quite as expensive as those we contract with now. And I think there's too much unknown and too much newness to make a decision tonight in terms of what direction we should give. I think we should stay on this path long enough to have a clearer perspective of what direction we should give. And that's where I'm at.
One opportunity that we have before we conclude tonight is to ask staff to collect specific data that will be helpful to us later. So for example, I think it's pretty, what I heard tonight is it's pretty rare, this all-encompassing fee that we have. And that it's predicated on the idea that it's not usually one tree, it's more than one tree. But I don't know if that's true. Honestly, I'd like to know. Because one thought crosses my mind, like, what if it is one tree? What if you paid five hundred dollars if it's one tree? And, you know, like, you could have bulked discount or, I mean, I don't know what else to say, up to a maximum of a certain fee, right? So up to like a thousand, like, as we have it now, which could be. Now, I know there is another convention and I did want to ask Director Murdoch about this. I know there's a point we cross over and Director Peterson into logging, right? It's when we hit a number of trees, now we're in a whole other category. It's not just a tree permit. Am I correct in that?
You may be recalling Councilmember Beckmeyer, the prior logging ordinance, which kicked in at
And we took that out.
Twenty or more trees. This overall tree ordinance overhaul repealed the logging ordinance and unified those tree removal requirements under the tree protection ordinance.
Okay, and so does, and then my second question on that was, so that would pertain whether you're doing development, a brand-new construction, or if you're doing a significant remodel of your backyard? Am I correct?
So the tree ordinance has three categories of regulated activity, if you will. Tree removal, tree encroachment, and significant pruning. The discussion tonight is related to the tree permit for a standalone tree permit removal. So in other words, a tree permit that's not associated with a building permit or a planning commission-type permit. So it's a little bit difficult to clearly delineate them. We're talking about a very narrow singular category here of tree permits not related to broader development on a property. The ordinance's provisions trigger tree permits in a variety of other scenarios, like if you need a building permit for an addition or you need approval from the planning commission, for instance. But tonight, we're talking about tree permits that don't involve that. And so you're not implicating, you know, for example, a project that's requiring removal of a tree. So these are trees that, as the ordinance is laid out, probably should not be removed in most cases unless they're significantly diseased or have some other compelling reason. Because removal and isolation is not related to economic use of the property or doesn't, you know, advance, you know, stability of the geology on the property necessarily. So it's the exception, not the rule, that these tree permits should even be granted, let alone at a reduced cost, if you will.
So there's three things that I wrote down that I'm considering that I would like to revisit or have more data on to help me think about them when we talk about this again. One of them is this substantial trimming or where does it become substantial? The fifteen percent thing, is it, did we, did we make that too narrow? Should it have been hot, you know, a little broader? I don't know. And if it's trimming versus removing, if it's a different fee basis. My concern, something the mayor brought up about the tree protection plan, is there a way to have that assessed by some other means than an arborist report? Maybe that's too much to ask, but it seems like there may be an opportunity for a staff member with expertise in building who has an, who can tell if this putting a deck on here or putting an ADU there or whatever is going to or not going to harm a tree. And is that only the domain of the arborist that can make that determination? And then the issue of charging, is it, one tree is this price, two or more trees is that price? And is there any advantage in terms of, because that would, that could achieve the goal for, some of what we're hearing from people is that it's too high. But we're saying, yeah, and it covers all the trees. If you're doing two, it's the same fee as if you're doing one. So I'm wondering about that pricing. Those are my three things I wrote down.
I continue to have question about the sliding scale for somebody with a lower economic disposition or senior, what have you. Just like to see some data around it and what it would require if we were to do something like that, what it looks like process-wise.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Beckmeyer's point. In my work professionally, arborists do tree protection plans. That's typically when you have new construction. It's not, not when you have an existing building that you're reviewing. So what I would like to see is a city arborist with a little more discretion, I think, to be able to look at that house and say, oh, it's fifty feet away. You know, the canopy is nowhere close to where you're working. The roots, therefore, aren't close to where you're working. You really don't need to do this report. You know, like, I would trust the city arborist to make that determination. And same for pruning. You don't, you know, someone can give you a few comments on how to prune. If you're only pruning fifteen percent, I, you know, I don't, that's not enough to really typically do damage to a tree. But, and again, the code doesn't necessarily require an arborist report. It's up to the discretion of staff. So it doesn't seem fair to charge a person for the arborist review if it may not be needed. And that's where, like, maybe it could be, for pruning in particular, maybe it's a small fee. And then the city arborist determines whether it needs to go through the whole process and then, you know, they can charge more. But it just seems really burdensome. I mean, I have a tree I want to prune a little bit and I'm going to prune a little bit one day and a little bit another day and not tell you it's going to add up over fifteen percent. I mean, it, you know, that's a lot of money to pay for someone pruning a tree and trying to keep it away from their house versus saving from fire, you know?
Well, and the bridge to the saving. I mean, the idea is, as I keep, thank you for reminding us, we're talking about trees that really don't need to be cut down, right? It's choice. And so doing the pruning in a way that is minimal and doesn't kill the tree is a different thing than doing a giant prune, yeah.
And Councilmember Bowles, do you think that more information would be helpful about what you were just talking about? Because I agree with what you were just talking about. And so would we be asking for more information about that? And when would we be asking for that information to come back? Would we ask for it next, you know, when we review the ordinance? Or I guess I'm, I'm confused about what we're asking staff for. I can only imagine what they're thinking. Just want to be clear.
I mean, it sounds like what you all are saying is we're going to keep the fee as it is until next year. And then we get a staff report when this is, is it next, I mean, August, when the fees went into account? Or, you know, when would we be getting a report? When do we have enough data that shows us if it's a problem or not?
So we typically review the fees as part of the budget process. So usually you see it on your agenda, well, sometimes in the spring. And we ask you significant changes in fees usually need to be adopted no later than June to be, well, in effect for the new fiscal year or sooner, maybe even May. What the council may consider, either, well, we can bring it back to you, whatever the data we have at that point, right? So and you will consider the fees with all the data points around that time. Or you can, you can also discuss it as part of strategic planning process, which we will have before the budget. So then you will be able to determine if you need a little bit more time or when you want to put it on the strategic objectives.
So around March?
That will be around March, April timeframe, yeah. Well, same timeframe as we had this current year.
That makes sense to me.
So that's not a lot of time, you know, so if someone really, I mean, they could wait a little while.
Yeah, I mean, to that, to your point, Councilmember Bowles, I mean, is till March, staff would start, would begin collecting the data in earnest right after the first of the year to get it to you by March? So it's not, you know, a significant number of additional months that the, but it will have been in place for a year. But, you know, does the council want it a year or, you know, a year and a few months from when the ordinance first became adopted? Or, or, you know, when? I think that March might be a little early. I think spring probably makes more sense to get more data. But that's, that's, that's the question.
Right, and I just want to clarify what I meant to say. So we will be collecting data based on your input right now and direction. What I meant to say for the strategic planning initiative, you will be able to determine or put it on the strategic plan for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five or like later in the fiscal year. So we will continue collecting data, but you will not, or may choose to adjust or not to adjust the fees as part of the next year's budget process, but instead adding it to the strategic plan to review during the fiscal year. Like you have current strategic plan and we have a list of tasks and objectives and that we need to deliver upon. I hope that makes sense, so the timing of the milestones that we usually bring to you.
I think so, but it seems like we might want to see a full-year cycle to see what that looks like. Because I don't know whether or not any particular season is going to be affecting whether or not people are clamoring for tree removal. I imagine if we see a storm like we did last year, series of storms, month's worth of storms like we did this year, folks might be during the winter months applying for permits at a higher rate. So it seems like if we were to get a full year's worth of data, that puts us into the fiscal cycle for next year. So we could say, well, it would be nice to have an update around mid-year time, around goal-setting time, just to see kind of where we're at. I think that I'd like to see what a full year looks like to really get the kind of detail I'm looking for. And I think that the timeline for looking at updates to the ordinance itself looks a lot more like fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, at which point I think if we're reviewing the updates to the ordinance itself, that might be an appropriate time to look at the fee structure simultaneously. We're already kind of, you know, going to have a lift going on around that time. Not that we want to add too much weight to a lift we already have, but within the context of trying to have sufficient data and not give our process whiplash, I think that that might be appropriate. Though it's not necessarily going to be advisable to have an update sooner than that just to see where we're at so far and get a sense early on.
Mayor, just for the council's consideration, the ordinance took effect in October 2022. There were some growing pains, if we'll call them that, to be generous, with identifying consultants, getting our processes realigned from the heritage tree ordinance to the tree protection ordinance, shifting responsibilities from public works to planning and vice versa. And so we really didn't have the opportunity to begin implementing the ordinance in earnest with expert consultant support, with additional administrative support until the March-April timeframe of 2023. So to get a year worth of data, which I think would be helpful, it'll take us through, you know, various seasons of the year and different challenges and complexities that arise due to the weather and so forth. Really, we're talking about, you know, March, April of 2024 to really have a robust dataset. That's generally consistent with what the current staff-created work plan is to implement the council's strategic priorities, to first get a year under our belts, if you will, with implementation. And then in the second year, consider what amendments might be needed in terms of cleanup, which, as mentioned earlier, we would expand to be more inclusive based on what I've heard tonight, to also look at opportunities for efficiencies, cost reductions, maybe better supporting certain policies and discouraging other behaviors. There's a lot of different levers that the council can pull related to the tree protection ordinance that result in better outcomes in the council's opinion and maybe discourages other kinds of outcomes as well. So that would be putting us, as mentioned, at FY 2024, 25. Because there's really a robust amount of work that's associated with formulating ordinance policy options after we've processed the data after a year, year-plus of actual implementation.
Thank you.
And just given that, I don't think I want to wait until 24, 25 when we update the ordinance. I mean, if we've had a whole year of data by March, April, that we'll be hearing back from staff, I think we can make a determination at that point if the fees need adjusting without waiting for this whole bigger process. That would be my preference.
Well, one thing that I think that dovetails with when the fee, the fee schedule is being looked at and amended anyway, right? So it's not off-kilter with that. So, it's not off-kilter with that.
Right, so, so the fee, you will be considering the fiscal year 25, 24, 25 fees in spring, well, next spring, right? So, at some point in May. And the full year of data under the new permit fee will be in August. So, what I was saying earlier, so you can definitely direct staff to add it to the strategic plan because that's part of our budget process, right? So, you, you will have a strategic plan discussion to add it to the strategic plan for fiscal year 24, '25. And we will bring it, well, staff will have to do some work to, to determine what the appropriate time would be for, based on the data we have, the RFP results that we are going to receive, all the consultants we are going to select, and all the moving parts that you don't have data right now to make a decision based on.
And if I could just jump in really quickly too, I just also want to note that I think we've had a very, you know, unusual start just because we put an emergency sort of like contractor in place to start working on this. You know, they were working with some other consultants in order to get the work done. I think that it would be great for us to have a certain amount of data under this new consultant, right? That's going to be put in place. Because by that point, things are going to be more streamlined, and we're going to have a better dataset. So, my concern is the dataset we've gotten from March, maybe up to about this point, is not going to be that accurate because we don't have the streamlining in place. Now, we've put out the RFP. It's much more clear how the consultant should be moving forward. I'm hoping that we're going to get better costs as we move forward. But we're going to need a certain amount of time under that new consultant in order to assess that. So, it would be nice to, I would say, get at least nine months of, of data under the new consultant. And that would maybe more align with what Yulia or Assistant City Manager Carter was mentioning.
And based on our estimation of how the new RFP process will play out, I think we will have probably six to nine months of data heading into the consideration of the next master fee schedule. But I would offer to the council to frame your expectations. So, if we were to just have this conversation again during the fee schedule, we're really talking about the same conversation, a subsidy or not, doesn't address the costs. What we will have some data to help support is a potential revised fee as part of the fee schedule based on efficiencies and changed costs. But those are different conversations. Certainly, if the costs are lower than they're calculated now, staff will propose a reduced fee. If they are higher, we will need to consider what that recommendation is to council in light of the angst, if you will, about the permit fee on the council and community. But it's our job to disclose what the costs are, and it's the council's job to set what the fees are. What we can't have a conversation about in this coming March or April timeframe is efficiencies or cost-reduction measures through an ordinance amendment that really needs to wait till FY 24, '25 based on the current work plan. So, depending on the conversation you want to have, that can only happen at a particular point in time.
Plus, now I'm tracking three different datasets. There's the implementation of the ordinance. There's the RFP process for obtaining the new contractor. And there's the fee of the ordinance itself. These are three distinct datasets because they have three distinct starting points. And so, when we discuss this in March, what I think will be interesting during our goal-setting session is that staff will have insights. And then, that will inform our conversation better. But I'm hesitant to say that the insights they have will be the complete data sets we really want to see before we make those final determinations. So, you know, it's my common thought process to consider that anything implemented in governance, if it goes quick, it's three years. And so, to look ahead to fiscal year 24, '25, to wrap this up in a package of we're tweaking the ordinance and we're seeing how that all falls into place in terms of the fee, that makes sense to me that it may well wind up being that we will be able to consider, we can make the informed decision when we look at that full package, even though I'm really welcoming what those initial insights look like when we discuss it during goal-setting. And that's to say, there's no reason for us not to have whatever conversation we want when we get there to see whether the data is more robust than I'm anticipating or whether or not we really might want to consider it to be due diligence to wait until we have more data than we will have at that period of time.
But, but there's no rule that says we can't revisit the fee like every year, right? As we revisit the fee schedule.
Right, we revisit all the fees every year.
Yeah, so, I, I just don't want to close that door if we have, you know, enough information to adjust things, that the process is going better. We don't need to pay this much for pruning, that we can adjust it then and not wait two more years. And then, we can always revisit it when we, when we redo the complete ordinance.
I second that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and, and I think it's, it'll be important to also know, like, how many violations we get, right? Because, you know, and, and this is what still concerns me about the education piece because I don't, I don't think the community knows yet. I mean, I know some constituents that were surprised, you know, when they, someone complained about them taking out a tree during the rainy season. And, and maybe, maybe staff can comment on that. I know some PBNR members have, were really offering to, to help, reach out to, you know, certain communities, real estate agents and, and arborists that work in our community to, to make sure they know about the ordinance. And, and beyond Connect with Pacifica, you know, what else can we do to be educating people? So, because we don't want fines. We don't want to punish people. We want to educate people so that they're doing the right thing.
Well, and I, I think the city can do, you know, some more outreach as well, just like we did with Connect with Pacifica. We have that, that we already put out. We could, you know, continue to put that out every so often. Additionally, I know in talking with Gail from Tree City Pacifica, she had expressed an interest in that. And I said, you know, certainly, you know, if Tree City Pacifica, you know, wants to send information, I mean, we can, you know, put it together for them and then they could, you know, they could send that out or hand it out to real estate agents or tree services or whoever they feel needs to have that information. Absolutely, you know, we could help develop that and, you know, give that to them based on what we're already putting out to the public.
That satisfies you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel, is there any more direction we want to give? Any more data we want to receive? Staff, do you feel as though you've gotten substantially what you need?
I do have one question about tree, arborist companies. Because I understand, I'm recalling, a change in the ordinance was that they have to register with the city or sign something that they understand there are these rules in Pacifica. How is that, how does that work exactly? Because, you know, I see lots of tree cutters and companies with lots of heavy equipment around. Are we supposed to walk up to them and go, hey, are you registered with the city? Do you know about the tree ordinance? Like, how does that actually in practice? So, when you ask, is there something else I want to know? I want to know that.
Yeah, so, one of the things that we have talked with folks, and we, we talked with them about during the most recent appeal process, you know, we told them that they, all the tree companies in the city, to work in the city or outside of the city, they don't have to be in the city, they need to have a, a business license, city business license. And as part of the, you know, city business license, you know, that is kind of under the umbrella of them even being able to work within the city, right? So, if they're violating, you know, the ordinance, I think that was part of this discussion that we had related to the ordinance to begin with, right? We wanted to tell these companies, you need to have a business license that allows you to work within the city. And then, if you're violating the rules by cutting down trees when you're not supposed to or not following the rules, then that gives the city some leverage to say, guess what? You're not getting a business license to work here.
Some city, I'm thinking of Hillsborough, where I, I have to have a business license to work there if I'm doing work there. And they also provide a little tag for your vehicle. Is, is that something we do? And, and that way, like, if you're just driving by, you know that that company has a license? But to, to your point, that we don't know who all these people are.
Our business license process does not include that type of tag or permit. San Francisco, I'm aware, also has a similar contractor decal that's supposed to be affixed to a vehicle. That would be an addition to the city's process that hasn't historically been there. I'll also note that the business license process is not really the right process to institute or impose regulatory requirements. It explicitly says that it's not intended for that purpose in our municipal code. So, we would need to think, I think, more broadly and creatively about if there's an interest in more administration and direct oversight, what that would look like, keeping in mind that has staff and financial costs associated with it. So, that could be discussed in that broader discussion at some point by the council. But there are trade-offs and costs, certainly.
All right, counsel, anything else? Staff, are we good?
Can I just summarize really quickly the questions that, again, that you wanted us to, to sort of answer? So, how many trees are being taken out per app? So, there was a question around how many of these apps have multiple trees and how many are single trees? What is substantial trimming? Right now, we're saying 15%. So, we want to maybe give some options to what that might look like, some alternatives. And then, one tree price, two tree price, three tree, tree price, sort of that, that. And then, the sliding scale as well, look into that. City arborist having more discretion to be able to say yea or nay, you need this or you don't. And then, the pruning requirement for an arborist as well. Or, you know, if you're going to have, if you're going to prune a tree, are you required to have an arborist?